All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Huffington School Board meeting for Thursday, January 21st, 2021. We have a full board with us tonight with Norm Gupel, Rob NATO, Andrea Folsom, Seth A-Frame, Jim O'Brien, and Student Rep Mia Richter disappeared. Hi Mia, good evening. Thanks for joining us. And we're also joined by Michelle Clark this evening and Superintendent Steve Chamberlain. So thanks, everyone. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Steve promised a new, a new flag, I think.
See, that's a flag with a new floor. See the floor?
Oh, yeah.
So this is what has been done in about fifteen classrooms the last couple.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Steve, do you want to talk about the flooring again? You broke up a little bit, at least on my end.
So this is a math classroom.
Hey, Steve, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm having trouble hearing you. I know if others are as well.
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if your headphones are connected and close by you.
How about this?
Oh, there we go. We got you.
About that. I've been a lot of, a lot of zooming today in each one. So thank you. The floor, about fifteen classrooms have been done with this flooring in district over the last couple of weeks. So this is a, the eighth grade math classroom. And we're excited to continue all the flooring. And so I thought I'd do an inside flag and show some flooring today.
Nice. Looks great. All right. So I'm trying to juggle. Forgive me for one second, everyone. I'm screen challenged, screen challenged at the moment. All right, there we go. So we are here once again in a, in a completely virtual meeting. And we're able to do this due to the governor's emergency declaration and emergency orders around the COVID-19 pandemic. Those emergency orders have allowed for public bodies such as the Huffington School Board to meet completely remotely. So there is no physical location tonight. But we do, well, we are making our meeting available for the public to view in real time on Zoom. We provided call in information for members of the public to be able to call and listen in to this meeting. And then we're also have available two sessions for public comment, one towards the beginning of the meeting and one towards the end of the meeting where members of the public can provide comments to the board if they choose. And we'll explain how to do that as we get closer to that portion. Other than, well, I guess I shouldn't say other than meeting remotely, but as we're meeting remotely, all the other requirements of RSA 91A, which is New Hampshire's open meeting law will be followed. And that includes the minutes of the meeting will be available per the statute. And then the only other change to a normal school board meeting that you'll observe is that each of our votes will be done in a roll call fashion. So it takes a little longer to get through, but we will comply with that requirement. So Mr. Chamberlain, is there any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight?
Do we added the non-public minutes from the, I think, the eighteenth Monday as one more, a minute to be approved tonight.
Perfect. And then is there any correspondence this evening?
The correspondence received were placed in the correspondence folder provided to the board.
Perfect. So if anybody looked at the agenda this evening, they'll notice that we have a lot of minutes on both public and non-public minutes to approve. And the reason for that, just so everybody knows, as I think everybody knows, the, the school board has been working on a superintendent search. And so we have spent some time conducting interviews with candidates and those are in non-public. And so, so anyway, so that's the, that's the reason for all these sets of minutes is the board has spent some Saturdays together. So with that, this may take a few minutes. I apologize. But is there a record, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on January 7th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Norm? Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So those pass five zero. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the public portion of the additional board meeting held on January 9th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
My only change would be that would be January 9th of 2021. Yeah, make sure we get the right year in there. Motion's been made and second, is there any, any discussion?
Good job, Jim.
All my checks are written the wrong way, but I found that one. All right. So Norm?
Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So those minutes are approved. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public portion of the additional board meeting held on January 9th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Norm?
Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So those minutes pass. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional board meeting held on January 16th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Norm?
Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Those minutes are approved. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional? I'm sorry. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public portion of the additional board meeting held on January 16th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Norm?
Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the additional board meeting held on January 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Any discussion? Norm?
Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And finally, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public portion of the additional board meeting held on January 18th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Norm?
Norm, Norm Gupel, the yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so those minutes are approved. Thank you, everybody, for, for being patient and bearing with us through that. So this brings us to our first opportunity for public comments. As I mentioned, there's a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting. And if you are a participant, you can, or an attendee, you can move your cursor, your mouse down towards the bottom of your screen. And there should be a option to raise your hand. If you click on that, that lets us know that you have a public comment that you like to make. And I would just ask if people would just state their name and their address. So we can record them in the minutes. Appreciate that. So firsthand that is up is Erin Vanderborn. Hi, Erin.
Hi.
Joining us.
Yes. Um, thanks, Jim. Erin Vandenvor. My address is 1017 Broad Cove Road. First, I want to say thank you to the members of this board for their continued hard work and service during an incredibly challenging period. It can't be easy. And of course, I want to say thank you to the teachers who are doing a really great job in adapting to remote instruction and maintaining some sense of a school community for our kids. So I'm calling because I wanted to raise two items with the board that I think have probably received insufficient attention in recent meetings. First, I wanted to highlight the challenges of doing remote learning with the youngest students. And then second, I wanted to make the pretty obvious point that, you know, our kids are simply not getting enough instructional time. And by that, I mean literacy and numeracy instruction and see what can be done to address this. So going back to my first point, we have a kindergartner and a second grader. I think that it's probably widely acknowledged that remote learning is really hard for kids at the youngest levels. You know, these kids still need to learn skills like pencil grip that are extremely difficult to teach by video. You know, a lot of them are learning how to read. And, you know, this system that we're operating under now requires near constant parental oversight and involvement because, you know, most of these kids can't yet read. They can't be left alone with the computer in an open browser window. You know, there are a lot of activities that are games that require a partner, things like that, which is, you know, fun. But the fact of the matter is that many of us are juggling full-time jobs along with remote learning. So we're really struggling to fulfill our obligations everywhere. And I guess I would also say that I recall that there was discussion back in the fall about taking steps to prioritize in-person instruction for the youngest students. And it just feels like that hasn't really happened. It kind of feels like the reverse is true and that Harold Martin students are getting even less in person or live instructional time than the older students are, which is disappointing. So my second point was really that, you know, there's a lack of instructional time here, which is, you know, troubling. I think it's probably safe to assume that our students have received about half of the instructional time that they'd get in a normal year. And I, I think if that were the case for a single student, particularly in these really foundational early years, it would probably be the case that the school would be having some serious discussions with the students' parents about, you know, whether the student is off pace and possibly discussing repeating a year. Now we have a situation where all of our students are in that boat. And I haven't heard much discussion lately about how that lost ground is going to be both measured and then made up. So I guess I would ask that the board or administrators address how we can measure those gaps and see what the plan is for getting them back where they need to be. I know those are really big questions. I think that the pressing issue is probably to just figure out how we can get more instructional time for these students. I know we're going back to the hybrid model on February 1st. Unfortunately, I don't think that's really going to be the answer because frankly, I don't think they're getting enough literacy and numeracy instruction under that model either. But I guess I'd say when we do go back to the hybrid model, it seems imperative that we not lose any more days than we absolutely have to. You know, I was disheartened by the recent decision to eliminate literacy and numeracy instruction on Fridays and replace that with the Unified Arts Day. I would really hope that we can leave the Chromebooks with families. So we don't have to lose more valuable days when we inevitably have to transition from hybrid to remote again. And so those are just kind of some preliminary thoughts. I don't know if the school's already thinking about that. And I guess I would just close by saying, you know, we've heard a lot in recent meetings about the risks associated with not letting high school students play sports. And I would just like to hear more discussion about the risks associated with having students miss so much instructional time in these really early years.
Erin, thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it. And we do have on the agenda tonight to, to hear from Steve, the superintendent about plans for going back to school on February 1st. And so that will be part of our discussion tonight, but I appreciate your points very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next hand that's been raised is Jeremy Friedus. Good evening.
Hi, Jim. This is Jeremy Friedus, 56 Old Hennecker Road. I thank you, Erin, for speaking up. And it is, it is, I get the stress and I can hear it in your voice, the, the strain you're under. So just know you're not alone. I agree with absolutely everything she just said. I think we need to reopen our schools now. This Petri dish of an experiment is failed. And I would go for full remote. So if you represent me, if any one of you actually does represent me, we would go full, excuse me, full back, full, pull back to school. Sorry. Thank you. I think the kids need to be in-person learning with their, with their teachers. And I also echo the sentiment that maybe it can be successfully done at some degree for high schoolers, although supervision is a question. Okay. You, you let me loose when I was a high schooler. I can tell you a couple of things I would have done that you don't want me to tell you on this call. But with a kindergartner, it is not, it is not doable. You're putting parents in unacceptable. And I want to just end by saying I was on a call today with a client from New Zealand. And we were just doing the nice catch-ups, right? And oh, well, we're in full remote. She said, you're doing full remote? Yep. And they said, well, we had five weeks and that's it. And we haven't done anything else since. It's amazing. It's just amazing how different, you know, and I was on another call earlier this week with a client in Georgia. They've been in school every single day this year, every single day. So from this constituents' household, we expect our children back in school. We're not asking, we expect our children back in school. So I hope you hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comment. I don't have any other hands raised at the, at this moment. Oh, we have one more. All I have is Jen. So Jen, you're coming on over.
Hi, this is Jen Blackgriff. And I was just calling. And I know you, you guys hopefully got my email I sent earlier today. So I just really want the school board and the administrators to really think about those kindergarten and first grade learners, especially the first graders who missed the end of their, the last third of their kindergarten year and are now in first grade, missing a ton of school. And I agree with Erin that at best, we probably have gotten 50% of a school year, which is really sad for a kindergartner. We do really need to look at the screen time limits put in place. The American Academy of Pediatric, they updated their limits in 2016. And I believe that was, they got rid of the limits for five and up. And plus, those limits were not meant for a pandemic with remote learning. Those limits were for kids sitting, watching Curious George and other TV shows. So the other point, since I always talk to you guys about reading, is that, you know, we need to give these kids more instruction in reading and math. But for reading, we need, this district needs to put evidence-based reading instruction in place across the board. It's not acceptable anymore to be using a mix. It's well-established cognitive science that all, that all kids learn to read. You know, in a certain way, and it just needs to be done. And this pandemic, if we don't make that leap now, these kids are going to really, really suffer. So anyway, I, I asked that, I really think it should be public that the data is analyzed and shared during a school board meeting. The elementary school uses STAR testing and other testing. And that type of data can, you know, I'm sure you can, I'm not positive, but I would guess that you can get average scores across grades and be able to compare that to past years. I really think that we need to look at it, you know, look at a really ordinary year, which would be 2018 to 2019. And we need to figure out what the, the gaps are and how we're going to make up for it. And I can assure you that in reading, it is, it, if kids are given the proper instruction that and for a proper amount of instruction that kids can catch up, it will not take two years for a student to catch up in reading that is in kindergarten and first grade. This is, I have two kids with dyslexia that fell behind a ton. And with proper instruction for the correct amount of time by great teachers in Huffington, they were able to catch up. So I mean, this will not catch up completely, but do, you know, get, get, start the process of catching up pretty quickly. So anyway, I just think that there needs to be a plan. It needs to be presented in public. We need to have conversations about this. I understand that you guys might take offense to the point about, you might take offense to the point about, you know, the sports being talked about so much. But the fact of the matter is, sports are talked about a ton on these school board meetings, a ton. And we don't hear conversation about academics and what's going on. And what are we going to do with all these kids that are falling behind and not getting taught? So anyway, I don't know what else. And I don't know what else to say, but we're going to end up, I mean, it's going to cost this district tons of money to make up the time that these kids are missing. And then, you know, if we're at a place where we can't afford to hire more people to help these kids, you know, I don't know why we're not getting more instruction. If it's because we don't have enough teachers, then we need to hire more teachers. And if we can afford to hire those teachers, then we need to think about extreme cuts. And I know no one in high school and one with high school kids want it, wants to hear about cutting sports and AP classes and honors classes. But if that's where we are as a district, if we can't teach our kindergarten and first grade kids, then that needs to be an open discussion with the community. And then I think that creative problem solving is definitely possible here. There can be small group instructions. There could be even on hybrid days, you know, small groups of kids could potentially, you know, be going into school or doing small groups online with the reading specialists. So there just needs to, it just needs to be more open and transparent. What is going on? And and we just, the parents need to hear what you guys are thinking about, not just that we're getting half the education this year. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. So at this point, I don't have any other hands raised. And so we are going to close the public comment portion and just know that there's an additional opportunity as we get further on in the agenda for public comment. So with that, the next item on the agenda is comments from the school board. So I don't know if anybody has comments they'd like to make tonight. Andrea's off mute, so I'm assuming she does.
I do. Yeah. So I wanted to, um, since we're, we're in a new year, I was doing some thinking and I realized, and it a little bit speaks to some things that were, were just said. There's a lot going on in our school district that we don't always know about. They might not be talked about in a school board meeting. You might not read it in your super skim. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight just one aspect of our school that I think is going really well and to provide some gratitude. Now gratitude is not the same as complacency. I think that we can both be really grateful for what's happening in our district and also continue striving forward. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to express gratitude to all of our counselors. We have counselors at every single one of our schools. At Harold Martin, we have Jackie Kleiner, who often is the right-hand woman to Bill Carosa. She knows a little bit about all of the students. She, if you have a kid or grandchild or just know a kid at HMS, you've probably heard of Mrs. Kleiner popping in and providing social emotional lessons. And she's really a resource and go-to. I know she works a lot with Marie Wilson as well as Joe Montana to make up the behavioral support team. So I wanted to give a, give a kudos to her. At our MSS, our Maple Street School, we have Emily Squibb and Laura Alamo. And they also, you know, they're in this upper elementary transitioning kids off to middle school, which presents a new, different kind of challenges. They've been doing weekly wellness videos. They do lessons in classrooms. They have resources in the scam. And they also have been having daily check-ins and then meeting individually with students. They also at Maple Street are lucky enough to have, that's where Dr. Alvin Caldwell is located. And he's our school psychologist. He is also a great resource to teachers and staff and is always willing to, to listen to folks and to provide resources and supports. At our biggest school, and so I wanted to give a shout out and thank you to the Maple Street team. At our middle high school, we have four more folks there. We have Jeff Daly. And this is actually, he's the director of school counseling. This is his first year, but he's really done his best to go above and beyond meeting with students, providing advocacy for student needs and doing some excellent relationship building. We also have Danielle Mizer, who has been quoted as truly a roll up your sleeves and do what it takes to help students find success kind of counselor. And I think that, that's something that's really appreciated right now. And then finally, we've got Beth Stern, who's working with our middle schoolers, which talk about a transition period of life. She really is there to provide both individual and group supports to help these kids find their voice and also, you know, continue to develop their self-esteem. And then lastly, folks might remember that last year, we talked about the importance of our SAT counselor. That's a student assistance program counselor. And they can help attend to a few more serious issues, I would say, with students' mental social, emotional well-being. And April Desroye, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, unfortunately. It's, it was a unique one. But she, this is her first year and what a year to, to walk into the school. But I was also got some great feedback on how she's worked really hard to really connect with students as much as she can. So I just wanted to express gratitude to the counseling services that we have at each one of our schools. I think this year in particular, we have needed and seen our counselors really step up to support our kids. And I just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thanks, Andrea. Rob?
Yeah. So I just wanted to think back to yesterday a little bit as I was watching the inauguration and listening to Amanda Gorman, the National Youth Poet Laureate, do her poem, "The Hill We Climb." And I couldn't help but think about the Poetry Out Loud program at Huffington High School and the forensics tournament and all of the things that teachers do to help kids bring, bring them along in different ways to articulate in what turned out to be an amazing poem yesterday by that young lady. So, you know, schools provide a lot of different opportunities for kids. And it just made me think back to, to the good work that was done by the English department and continues to be done in, in that area. It was, it was a great poem.
I agree. It was, it was just pretty amazing to watch. And whatever, whatever side of the political aisle you're on, just, you know, that poem and sort of the emotions that are brought forward were pretty powerful. It was great to watch. Thanks for bringing that up, Rob.
Sure. I'll go real quick. I'm never quick, right? No, I just want to say thanks to Erin, Jen, you know, and others for, you know, public comment. You know, we are going to unpack this night with Steve. And, you know, one thing that's passionate about being a parent is what we are always trying to look out for our, our, our children and for other students in order to make sure that we're meeting their needs. There's a lot of questions that, you know, Steve's going to answer tonight, which, you know, I respect even. He knows what the community is looking for. And I just want to say, you know, as a parent, I'm very passionate about what I want for every student, you know, because I believe it's a very difficult time for all of them. And I understand that at the younger grades, it's hard being remote. You know, we're not able to be able to relate to our teachers remotely and understand how to get there. But, you know, I trust schools, they're going to come up with a recommendation or a way to get back in person. I just want the community to know that we hear it. We see your emails and that. Always feel free to speak how you feel. That's the most important thing, you know, we need to know. I think it's important. And I think this board does its best to work, to work together, you know, regardless of the subject. You know, we have a job to do in order to bring us, bring these children back. You know, yesterday, um, I have a daughter that's eight and a son that's 10, sixteen-year-old. He's out of this. Four years ago, they really didn't know much about what an inauguration was. So it was, they couldn't comprehend what was happening. And this is not a political statement on whoever won or whatnot. It's about the moment for me as a father. You know, for them to be able to see their eyes light up, seeing such a beautiful ceremony, regardless of who was getting sworn in. It was powerful for me, you know. My daughter didn't realize this was the first woman as vice president. She did not know that. And for that, it really brought, you know, tears to my eyes because of how our country has changed. You know, and for me, it was a proud moment to be able to be a part of history with my, with my child. So I thought everything, you know, what Rob said, the ceremony was just great to be able to educate my children in the moment, to share historical moments that they could comprehend and understand. And then they asked me how many presidents I was around for, and they thought it was like 40. And I'm like, you guys don't understand how it works. But my, my point is, it was, it was a great moment. And I'm just, I'm very happy that we had a good ceremony on Jim's birthday. Happy birthday, Jim. That was yesterday.
Turning 30 is tough.
I'll make one more Amanda Gorman comment. So I heard her interviewed late, sort of late at night on CNN. And she was talking about profound speech pathology issues that she had through school and how special education and supports really encouraged her to overcome those as well as her effort. But, you know, it really made me think about how our special education services and encouraging kids to overcome the difficulties that and encouraging kids to overcome the difficulties that they have and to deal with them and work on them really can uncover truly, you know, amazing, amazing things. So for all the teachers who, who help our kids in the areas that they, that they need the help, both specially and otherwise, I was just an example. Cause I was just shocked when someone who's so good at language talked about having a problem with speech. I just never would have thought of that. And um, it was really moving to hear how she, you know, people helped her overcome it. So thank you to everyone who does that good work in our schools.
Thanks Seth. Um, Mia, anything for a public comment this evening? No, um, I, I'll just say a, a couple of things and, and really it's, um, you know, we've received um, over the past, I don't know, bunch of days, um, some really good and very well thought out um, emails from, from parents. And then we heard some comments this evening are along the same lines. Um, and I know we're gonna unpack this. I don't, I don't wanna go and dwell too much on it. Um, but I, I just wanna make a couple of connections and, and I think first, like, I completely understand um, the frustrations, I think, many parents um, and community members feel. And I would just say, you know, from, from at least the actions that the board has taken since um, you know, over the summer and into fall, you know, what we've, what I think we've been working really hard to do with Steve and the leadership team and administration and teachers is to have as much um, in-person learning as we can. And um, you know, through November, um, although there was um, uh, it was challenging and we had a, a lot of um, on and off again because of cases of COVID in our schools. We really strove to, to keep that um, as much of the in-person learning as we could. Um, I don't wanna repeat history, but we know that um, we had a, a lot of cases after the Thanksgiving break. Um, I think this board, uh, you know, as, as we've been discussing overall, sort of the risk management approach and the risk management approach that, that we agreed to as a board reluctantly and with the, with administration was uh, to, to go into fully remote. Um, and I, and I just speak for myself, you know, knowing what the limitations of that model was, which is why I think this board was trying to not go there um, throughout the school year. Um, and then as we've been talking about through, I, I think this whole crisis that we find ourselves in, um, you know, one of the limitations that we have um, uh, aside from space um, to bring students back a hundred percent, um, is just, is staffing. And I, I know our superintendent has said, um, since the beginning of this crisis that, you know, staffing is gonna be one of our biggest challenges. Um, because if you don't have the staff to run and clean a s- a school um, and, and provide a, a health and, healthy and safety environment, it's really hard, um, if not impossible to bring your students back. And so um, that was part of our challenge that we didn't have the staff in, in order to, um, to fulfill our end of what, of what the district needs to do in order to provide health and safety. Um, and so, you know, here we are moving into February first. Um, at least as, as, as one board member, I'm, I'm committed um, to doing what we can to um, bring as many students back into the school buildings as we can. I mean, that's been our position as a board and, and I, I'm pretty confident that's where we're gonna stay. Um, and knowing that in, in doing so and, and keeping students um, in school is, uh, it's, it's gonna be challenging. Um, it's, you know, we heard from Dr. Fauci today um, that, you know, we're in the darkest time of this pandemic that, um, you know, there's, there's, I guess vaccinations on the way. Um, but, you know, we're, we're not through it by far. And so as we welcome students and teachers and faculty and staff back into our buildings, um, you know, I'm doing it with eyes wide open that, um, you know, hopefully there's uh, there's light at, at the end of this tunnel, but we're, we're not at the end of the tunnel. And so, um, so that's gonna be a, a management piece that we're all gonna have to work through. Um, and then, you know, there, there's been, I, I know some emails about, uh, you know, the part of our challenge here is the MOA that we have. And that with vaccinations coming, that we should, we should re-enter into negotiations on the MOA. Um, you know, the MOA is entered into, uh, knowing that um, if circumstances change, that, that is an option, that we, that the, the option is there to go back to the table and have those discussions. And I appreciate that, um, you know, vaccinations and vaccines are starting. Um, but there's not a timeline. I, I think there's, you know, there's some phases the state has put out, but we're not, you know, there's no guarantee of when those vaccinations will occur for students, um, for, for teachers, I should say. And it is frustrating to see sort of the slow pace and, and where teachers are put into the overall um, vaccination program. But I do think, you know, for everybody who's asked, I think when the time comes and, and we have some clarity that, you know, the MOA is a document that um, that can and should be reopened if, if circumstances allow. Um, you know, and this board has committed along with our teachers that we wanna follow um, health and safety guidelines, which, you know, have been six foot separations, a lot of hygiene, um, washing of hands and surfaces, um, and masks. And so, um, I, at least as one board member, um, I haven't heard anything um, that, that would make me want to change sort of those fundamentals of our health and safety program at this time. Um, and that's sort of what's embedded in the, in the MOAs. Um, and then the last thing I'll just say, you know, for those who've been watching our meetings over the last, I feel like forever, but it's probably been a month or two, you know, we've been talking about our budget um, for next school year and, and, you know, the, the, the drivers of those budget amounts and what it means. Um, and my, you know, reflection just on the conversations that we've had, I've had over the past couple of days. Um, and knowing that, you know, when we do go back to school, um, not only are there, you know, the academic issues we're gonna face with, with um, children who are gonna need additional help and numeracy and math, those are real and, and those are investments that we're gonna need to make in order to, to um, you know, ensure quality education. Um, but we know across the programs, there's, there's gonna be additional academic needs. There's gonna be additional um, support needs in terms of emotional support um, for our students. And um, when I, so I, I, I say that knowing that's true um, and knowing that um, our administration and our teachers and our staff are thinking about that. And, you know, the budget that's put forward, um, uh, I, I think someone called it at, at some point, you know, a maintenance budget, that there's not a lot of big new things in this budget, that this budget is, is maintaining what we have, maintaining the programs that we have, the, the support staff that we have. And, um, you know, there are drivers that are driving up some of our costs, which we don't have to get into now, cause we've been talking about it a lot. Um, but I just hope, you know, the community um, and, and parents, um, you know, appreciate that, you know, that additional support, um, there's a cost to it. And, and, you know, our budget, if, if we start seeing, you know, reductions, um, you know, what's on, I didn't say what's on the table is, is the support, but you know, it, all this stuff has a cost. And my hope is that we can move through this budget cycle retaining um, the core programs that we have can, retaining the staff that we have, because I know we're gonna need it. Um, and we don't have crystal ball, knowing what every single need is going to be. Um, but I can't pretend that we can go into um, a, a post-pandemic educational structure with less resources that we had going um, through this year into it. And so I worry about that. Um, and so I'm, um, as I think about the year ahead, I, I just hope that we can um, you know, we, we can get back to school, we can assess where, where we've lost and then we can have the resources to deploy in a way that we can meet the needs of those students that we know are gonna have additional needs um, from sort of this last, you know, what will be a year and a half of um, on again, off again, you know, challenging education um, programming. So that was been on my mind. I apologize for taking so long to put that out, but um, um, it, it helped me sort of think through all the feedback that we've been getting and sort of how we forge ahead and what our task is as a board. Um, so with that, um, we'll move on um, to our presentation and staff report. And we have um, enrollment with Nesdeck. And so, um, Steve, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, I just um, a thought as we've, working through the budget committee and working through with things like uh, what percentage of adequacy to support. Um, we did receive and we, we get, we received a, a enrollment projection from the New England School Development Council. And just a little bit of history, when I first got here, former superintendent Doug Brown and Schoolhouse Consulting did our projections for years. And then um, Michelle did it. We did it in-house. She did some work. And then when we went to the facility project and we were close, we went through for a year, we were consolidating schools and then we had some changes. We decided to, to commission Nesdeck to do a study for us, just as those, that information would be more critical as we moved and we've stayed with Nesdeck ever since. And I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. We've, we've seen in my um, time, a significant change in the projection. And, and that's not a surprise. It's just a, it's just a significant change. So um, we, this was, this is what we received in December. You know, we have the nine oh two and, and next year, uh, an eight ninety-five and under nine hundred K through twelve. And why K through twelve? Because that's our adequacy receipt. And then if you go to what we were looking at, and even as in April of last year, we were at nine ninety-one, one thousand, all the way up to eleven hundred. So, uh, the reason I bring it to the attention, you know, we've spent some time, right? We started in the finance committee, looked at ninety-five to a hundred or, or adequacy in that ninety-seven and a half. And I did get a chance to call Nesdeck uh, and talk with their consultants. And it made sense, if you remember, one of the things that Bill and I would look at with, with, with quite astonishment, we had a projection of eighty-six kindergartners. And uh, eighty, we, we haven't seen in my twenty years in district, we haven't seen eighty-six kindergarteners. But when you project eighty-six and bubble in the retention and growth all the way through, that's how you get to a big number in ten years. But that eighty-six was reconfigured down to forty-eight. And obviously, it's such a small that we don't get the additional growth as we go through. So um, I do think we, we, you know, if the budget committee asks norm about, you know, are we comfortable with the net, with a hundred percent? I think with the projection right now, I think the ninety-seven and a half is about as impressive as we can be. Um, they are, you know, what, 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 our plan and our hope isn't what we believe is we're going to get returns from our homeschool and from of our other situations as we get back to normalcy. And Nesdeck will adjust based on the return numbers. But I just wanted to make sure that the anomalies were shared, that you've seen the report. It goes up to the public and that information goes to Mr. Koopel as, if, if there are any questions at the budget committee about changing the estimate for adequacy from ninety-seven and a half anymore. That was really the goal um, of, of this quick presentation, a little bit of history of enrollment, where we were last year in the spring, where we are now, and what we expect if we get back to normal.
Thanks.
That was just something to make sure that everybody was aware as we make decisions.
So walk, walk, walk us through if we change it to a hundred percent. Just, we change it, we don't get that number. Walk me through with what happens with the additional.
And then it, and then we, then the, the, the estimated um, tax rate increase isn't, you know, it, the tax rate goes up more than what we would anticipate. And that we think loses the credibility or faith in, in the budget process that Michelle and I and the board's gone through. So we, you know, we're, we do, certainly, we try to be conservative in estimates because that number's a, you know, a, a, a people, for people's planning and, and certain their budgeting. We're not crazy conservative. Um, and I think ninety-seven and a half is fair. But I just didn't wanna have this information on the table when it, it maybe understand why we don't wanna go to a hundred percent.
No, I'm gonna have a, yeah, coming out of a global pandemic, you, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Exactly.
And you have to play it safe and responsible.
Yeah, I think that's well said. Thank you. Any questions about that? Everybody okay?
Thank you, Steve.
You bet. Thank you. I appreciate that time.
And I just want um, uh, just to let everybody know that Julia Shahadi, um, our, our second student rep joined us. And so, um, I didn't want to not announce that. So welcome Juliet. Um, so next on the agenda is um, is uh, the FY twenty-two operating budget and warrant. And so I know um, Steve, you have the first item here on the, the general fund budget value.
Sure.
If you wanna hop on that.
Yeah, happy to walk you through. So, and this is um, something that um, was presented to the budget committee in the last couple of meetings. So very, it was after, I think the next day after the board voted to adopt their general fund number, we received guidance from DRA, the Department of Revenue Administration on how to handle an expense coming from the maintenance trust, which we've done for years on the performance contract. So to, what we've had it as an expense and a revenue. And that meant we were spending a little more, but we had the revenue out of the trust to compensate for it. So that's how we had handled it and received it. But they changed the guidance to run it just out of the maintenance trust and not through the general fund in the revenue piece. So there's a, the total general fund budget value has gone down forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, so the new number, which is an action item tonight, which has been presented to the budget committee. It is in all the materials for the budget committee. So this is just catching up to a really a, a, an administrative allocation of funds. The tax rate hasn't changed and, and, and nothing changed, is now twenty-one million, seven thirty-two, oh, five-nine. And that's a three point eight percent increase to the budget side. And that of course includes the increase of the bond and that's the budget expense side. Um, so tonight codifies the DRA guidance about how to handle the expense from the maintenance trust for the performance contract. Are you okay?
Yeah, any questions for Steve on that? And everybody's ready for the action item um, on that number? Perfect. All right, um, next up is the review of warrant.
Sure. So um, a- as we've talked about throughout the process, we've been seeking guidance from our attorney, from the School Boards Association attorney as well as DRA on how to handle a unique article. And the unique article is in response to the legislation of giving the district on the opportunity to go from two and a half retention for um, tax rate stabilization to five percent retention per ta- tax rate stabilization. And um, throughout this process, from the formation of the legislation through education for school officials, through implementation. Uh, at one point, the guidance was trying to create language that would say to withhold a fullest extent of the law, thereby the town wouldn't have to go back repeatedly to change any article or the school wouldn't have to go back to change the article. Uh, the updated uh, guidance from our attorney, from the School Boards Association attorney as well as DRA is to keep it specific. And so the language now aligns with the statute of up to five percent. Um, and so that language has been codified. So just to adopt, that's, it's, it's, it's not a substantive change in principle, but it's a substantive change in language. So uh, tonight we'll adopt that. Michelle will make sure that, I think she's already done it, to align with the warrant that's with DRA in the system, which will be provided to the budget committee next week for their vote, article by article. So this is um, uh, just a change in language from what we hoped would be up to the fullest extent of the law to a specific five percent, which is in the statute.
Um, any questions or comments for Steve on that one? That one seems pretty straightforward. And everybody's ready for the action item? All right, perfect.
And the last piece is, is just to make sure and, and um, the, the materials presented to the budget committee over the last two meetings, I know Mr. Koopel will be updating further down the agenda, are all on the website and certainly, and, and have been provided with the, to the board. The big, the, the last piece of the substantive materials, which I look at as the comprehensive all-in document that I use throughout the school year repeatedly because it has the expense, it has the tax rate, it's got the CIP in it, it's got the fund balance in it, it's got all our trust values in it, it's got uh, area by area FTEs increases. So to me, it's the comprehensive document. Um, Michelle put that together and we wanted to make sure that the board had a copy. Uh, it was presented to the budget committee last night and as any changes from the budget committee go, we'll update it. And that's on the website, but more just to bring awareness to the entire comprehensive budget picture for FY twenty-two.
I'm muted myself. Thank you, Steve. Any questions on that? And, and I just wanna um, you know, thank Michelle and Steve. Um, but I, I think especially Michelle for all her hard work in compiling that document, putting it all together, keeping it updated. It's a lot of work. It's, um, and it's a great, it, it's, it's, it's a great, um, I wouldn't say narrative because it's not quite a narrative, but it's, it's, it's a wonderful document to find what um, you need in the budget. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just keep rolling.
Keep rolling.
So the next piece um, is our, a regular of operating and learning in a global pandemic. Uh, so just a quick update on where we are with cases in our schools. Um, Harold Martin's in, in, completely understandable, but the, the communication with the nurses in a full remote model or a substantially full remote model is much less than when obviously we're sending kids to school. Um, Harold Martin School has three students in quarantine, uh, one positive student in isolation and one staff member currently positive in isolation. Um, Maple Street had uh, two staff members came off uh, isolation. So they are um, uh, none currently are in isolation or quarantine. Um, the high school right now has uh, three students in quarantine who one is ill and is waiting for a PCR test just to see where they're at. So that's just the current piece. Um, regarding a, just discussion about February first, um, just a little bit of the preface about the factors. And um, so the, one of the driving factors in our decision to extend um, was our custodial, our, our custodial ability and to fulfill, you know, as, as, you know, Rob was on it, when Primex said, it's important that we as a district, if we say we're going to do something, it's important that we do it. And we have set a cleaning standard and a documentation standard. Um, and so we have, as you look further down the agenda, custodian coming tonight. And the hope is with the two weeks notice will get us back pretty close or at least additional shifts around the February first. So that helps. One of our staff members who was out on medical has, has returned on alternative duty. And the alternative duty does include limited, but yes, there is some. And the alternative duty does include limited, but yes, there is some cleaning. So we help that. We have another um custodian that we hope to hear later on that will be returning who can continue. So our expectation is. That with some overtime and possibly some substitutes, and I appreciate a couple of community members that willing to come and we'll connect with them as well. We think we can maintain our cleaning standard. And our in our commitment to our MOAs and just good practice during a pandemic. So we think. Our custodian piece um will be okay. And and I should have said this from the beginning, talking with the nurses, talking with leadership team and teachers. Uh, we want to, you know, everybody wants to come back. We want to see kids in our schools again. Uh, absolutely, we've been out a long time and um there has been some comments about the attrition, right, of just the same thing. It's time. And so February first, we could are. Are looking forward to kids in our schools again. The other piece, and it wasn't a major consideration, but it's something that we're monitoring. Is and I showed the the flooring right in the flag is to make sure. That all the building work that was done through the holiday break through this extended remote time. The buildings are ready. That includes fire doors, that includes the elevator, that includes. If you've been in Maple, it's been great. They did the abatement, there's been a lot of equipment in the halls and. Um, we anticipate that being all set and and I think we're going to uh when we get down to the model, it's more specific discussion. In order to make sure that Maple Street is ready for February one, that Friday before, we're going to need a asynchronous day so teachers can come in and reset their classes ready for kids on Monday. So the custodians would think we're doing okay, the um facility project would think we're doing okay. So I, as many of you know, I meet with our three nurses uh every week, we we review. Cases, we review our practices, we review. And all three, um, really, it's important to come back to school. Um, they are encouraged by the positive cases, you know, the number of cases in Huffington going down, which is one of the one of the metrics that they're monitoring. And hospitalizations going down. Um, so those indications that those continue in that direction in the next two weeks, we think, you know, that will certainly support. Or at least getting to a safe return piece. So our nurses, our custodians, our building projects, um, we think are all get aligning in in the score and the data aligned to return on February first. Um, so let's talk about the elementary. Um, so the elementary will be back February first in person in a hybrid. Team, you know, team A, team B. Um, in preparation for that, though, Maple Street on the Friday before will need an asynchronous day. So teachers can come in and get their classes ready after the building project and all that work. Um, and so we think that piece, um, the staff are getting ready and we do one of the questions earlier and I talked to Matt Stone today, we were able to get about a hundred and fifty five Chromebooks early delivered. We think um that, you know, we do have some more ability to have some in school ready to support and some outside. So we think that that assets help as well. One of the concerns, uh, as we have an open discussion with leadership team is we are in, you know, we're in a tipping point status on our matrix. Right? On tipping point is anything more than twenty five. We are more than twenty five and it's it looks like even at our current trajectory, it's going to take a while to get below twenty five. So when we're at the tipping point, um, you know, one um, one positive in a school closes in school for a couple of days. Two positives in a school closer for five and we get five or above, we close the district. And the concern is. Especially because we've been out so much that if we do, if we follow the matrix. Then we may be in on the first and then depending on scores, we could be out in three or four days and that in or out, but we have some technology to handle it. Concerned about morale, concerned about consistency and practice and model. So what we talked about with the nurses and talked about with the leadership team is is trying to adjust so we can, we stay in. As long as we can stay in. And so that's more of the model we did in the fall, even though we were at the tipping point. You know, we stayed in when we had thirteen staff member quarantine, we couldn't find, we went out. And and have a conditional um alignment when the conditions warrant, we can't safely have school. But not close the district because we have three, you know, three cases at Maple and two at Harold. Because if there's no cases at the high school, then we want to continue to run the high school. That is a sea change. But we're trying to get as many days as we can. We're trying to avoid the in and out as rapidly as we can. Um, and and try and communicate and contact trace, which our nurses are very, you know, are very competent at. And what and see if we can close a school or portion of a school versus the district or the entire school, even though. We are in the tipping point twenty five or above. Again, with all our efforts and trying to stay in as much as we can. There still may be a time where through contact tracing, we can't run in person school. But instead of just following, you know, the five plus and maybe, you know, at at Maple, we could run the other two schools. So that we're trying to remain consistent and trying to and create an environment that for contact tracing, great communication. We can isolate the closure and still run in person school with our. Safety and health and safety requirements as much as we can. So as you as you just, as we talk about the secondary level in the elementary, just think about. Approaching staying in as much as we can until the numbers and the cases and the nurses and the contact tracing say, Steve, we just can't do it. At the secondary level. And and then and I've I've got a lot of emails and and a lot of a lot of just thoughts from staff and we've learned so. There's a tension at the secondary level between efficient delivery of instruction. In a model and, you know, basically content. And how you have people in in a hybrid type fashion and. Um, and that's the tension in the balance that we're trying to figure out. So there's no question that with the consistent remote model. That we made some advances in pacing through our content at the secondary level. But there is also, we have an increase in students who are not engaging and not being successful in this model, and that's the tension. What, you know, what is is the the content drive where? We've already heard it, right? We have external standards to meet before certain exams, we have certain standards to meet over past. Um, and we have, you know, pathways to make sure that every student become the best version of themselves. So. The and we never, if you remember, we went to a skinny Monday team and two days in for each team, and then we were going two weeks of. Um, supported, uh, you know, facilitated remote and we abridged that due to the cases in December eleventh. So. We have three weeks coming back from February one to the February break. The first week, we would the that we think the balance of content and students in and all students in is a basically a skinny Monday, set the week. The first week, it's fifty percent of the kids in every day. The second week is skinny Monday and then a regular day one, day two schedule. But trying to have a facilitated remote. Piece so we can continue our content progression and have many kids in who needs. Who are targeted for support because we have. Pretty good data about the kids who are in danger of not being successful. And so we would have a regular schedule for those kids in classrooms. And all of this would be done by synchronous learning to the fullest extent our staffing would allow. So we would like to engage and remember, one of the issues that we've talked about is when we have. Eight or nine staff with documented medical uh Americans with Disabilities Act. Modifications to their schedule, when they are teaching remote, we need a second, we need an adult in that room. And when you go to the full synchronous model, that adult has student responsibilities as opposed to class responsibilities. And we're not able to run. Full synchronous, um, because we weren't, even though we're trying to hire people, we haven't been able to procure enough staff to run. Of remote adults for remote teachers and student support for those kids. So that's really the the question for the board, the balance in the secondary level. Get all kids in for a week, two kids get, I'd say about a hundred kids in and those hundred kids. Are targeted support who really need to be in class with those teachers. And following up schedule, which we learned when we co-horted this group earlier in the year. And they were in the room for the all day, it wasn't as engaging and we lost kids. So we want to change classes, to be in classroom to the teachers. And to do as much synchronous as we can to practice having kids in your class and synchronous as much as we can that our staffing allows. And and be as in as we can at the secondary level, targeting those in need and moving to. Content at a pace that we think maintains as we get closer to the second semester. I think that was a lot.
Yeah, I don't think I followed fully the secondary. So the first, the first week of February, tell me what you intend to do.
So Monday straight eight, eight forty five minute periods, we see all the kids remote. Tuesday, team, team A half, first half of team A. Wednesday, second half of team A. Thursday, first half team B, Friday, second half of team B. You have half the kids in. On a Tuesday, half the kids in Wednesday, half the kids in Thursday, half the kids in Friday. You, every teacher sees their student twice, once virtually, once in person. And um, we have during that, we'll do as much synchronous as we can based on staffing and based on parallel experiences. So that's the first week.
What location is this?
High school. That's secondary.
And then the 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 following week.
Skinny Monday.
I, yeah.
All and all eight, we didn't see the week and then we have day one on Tuesday with eighty kids, ninety kids, the kids who are struggling, the kids that really need it, they're in class with teachers on Tuesday. On Wednesday, it's day two.
Another eighty kids?
Yep, Thursday, it might be the same. Some kids will be in every day, Thursday, day one, Friday, day two. There's we have uh supported learning and it's targeted, but we have. That time, the kids then have three classes. Um, of they have the teacher three times in the week.
So the differences from what was done before is the eighty or so kids who are coming to school. They weren't traveling their schedule, they were just in school remotely watching the class. Now you're going to have them travel. Through the day and the ones who are not invited in will be remotely doing the same class from home, hopefully.
Correct. You got it.
Okay, would that be synchronous?
Steve, like. It's it's as much synchronous as possible um based on staffing and where we are. We'll go to the fullest extent we can, but those kids. Um, may be, you know, may have uh devices in their class with.
And if you're, and so when you can't do synchronous and you're not one of the eighty or ninety. In your home, what's happening to you?
So while you, the teacher will be teaching that period. Um, remotely and the kids in class will have to have devices so they can. So basically, everybody will be remote, but some will be in the class. But if at some point, if the student has a question and we can do it synchronously, we'll be showing the questions and we'll be teaching it more traditionally. We think that's the balance of content, balance of students, and that gets us three weeks until break. We did talk about doing two of the hybrid weeks. And it's just the. I mean, that's the always the tension in the secondary level is content and that's trying to balance that. But it. We under, you know, that's where we're at on trying to balance that tension.
Can I ask a? I guess I'm. Struggling to see the difference between the first week when the kids are hybrid and half the kids are in and half the kids are, you know, they're they're off day. Doing that and having all the facilitated kids come in at the same time, does that overload the rooms to too much capacity? Is that the problem?
Say again for me, Rob.
So I guess I'm I'm confused as to why you couldn't do your, what you're going to do in the first week, but then have those uh those kids who were doing facilitated remote in as well. Does that overload the? The classroom numbers? Is that the problem with doing that?
Yes, that's the concern. I'm going to bump up Rebecca because she's done some work about um, you know, the classes and that piece. Um, so the first model, you see the kids twice, second model, you see the kids three times and that's.
I'm sorry, Steve, I think I think you bumped up the wrong person.
Oh, look at that. Sometimes it changes. I was hoping Rebecca would raise her hand. I'll find her.
She just did.
Perfect. So the the first model gets half the kids in and the teachers with kids two days a week. Second model gets teacher contact three days a week. Um, virtually for seventy five percent of the kids, in person for about twenty five percent of the kids. Rebecca, you want to speak to more nuances?
It'd take a minute for my my room to warm up. Yes, um, so when we looked at this, um, we. The first week of February starts our new semester. So it's really important, we think, to have all the kids come in. Meet their new teachers, starting off the new semester, turn in any books or materials they had left over from semester one. Pick up all their new materials, books, everything that they need for semester two. Um, we want to do that in that hybrid model so that we have the team A days and team B days. They can come in, they get to see all of their teachers. They can see their school counselors, we need to do some schedule changes, they have those opportunities, they get contact with people, which is really important. And then um, we have definitely been keeping really strong data on kids every grade level, seven through twelve. Who are are doing all right and um, some are knocking it out of the park and some are really struggling and need that extra help. Um, what we did just prior to going full remote, um. We had um some kids coming in and we tried to keep them in pods in certain classrooms with um certain. Um, instructional assistants overseeing those pods. Um, the kids that did it were real troopers, but we we learned some, we we got some good data, we learned some good lessons. It's really hard to sit still in the same room all day long. That that was rough. Um, and we were trying to figure out by the end of the day, what can we do to kind of still stay socially distant but do something? Um, because that was, that was a rough thing. So we know that um. We need to, we need to keep the pacing that we've started, um, because we've, we've made up good ground in each of our um subject areas. Um, we're not where we usually are by this point in the school years, but but we're getting there and we've got some good momentum and we have a really nice rhythm right now. Uh, we've got that very familiar day one, day two, even though it's virtual and a little awkward, at least it has that rhythm. So. We'd like to keep that rhythm and continuity for our kids as long as we can. Um, we think the way we can do that is to say. Come in, get your supplies, see us, reconnect, um, we'll go the two weeks remote. Um, but that will keep the rhythm of the pace of the day one, day two, and allow you to have more contact time in your classes. And then those kiddos that we know are really struggling, they'll come into school, they're still going to come into school with their laptops or their devices. Um, and rather than have them in a pod, because it's so hard to sit in one room for that amount of time, they'll follow their schedule. And so they will go to their regular classrooms and they'll do their learning from there. Um, it's a good way for some of our teachers to start to try to, it it at first, it's probably going to still look like. Remote learning, even though they're in the room, but for the teachers that have the equipment or the teachers that are ready to start. We can start playing with that next step of synchronous learning. So we'll have some kiddos in the room that we can start to do that with a little bit, but it'll be really small numbers so we can. Really try to figure out what's working, what's not working, where do we need to tweak some technology or tweak some practices? Um, but they're going to have the same experience pretty much whether you're in the room. Or you're at home, they're still going to have the same pretty much a virtual. Um. Virtual instruction, it's just going to be the ability to move around a little bit and not sit still all day long. So we'll do that, we'd like to try to do that. Um, so first week hybrid in. See everybody, say hi, two weeks mostly remote, but some in for support and some extra help and some services that they may need. Um, and then we'll have vacation week, we'll be able to kind of report back before that and figure out how to recalibrate. And and bring you the next rendition of what we do for for March and moving forward.
Thank you, Rebecca. That was really helpful.
I'm gonna put my hand down now.
So I guess if I'm just, if folks don't mind, why don't if there's more questions on sort of what's been proposed for the middle high school, sort of. Let's talk about that now and then if there's questions for um the elementary, we can sort of circle back and 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 have a conversation with that and maybe pull in. Amy or Bill if we need to, if they're if they're on the line. So I, you know, any questions or thoughts on sort of this model being put forward?
Right, I get the model now and. See what you're saying in terms of keeping most of the kids fully remote, you know, allows you to do more content and keep things rolling. Um, and the facilitated. Um, and the facilitated kids come in to get, you know, direct, what, what's the thought for after February break?
We hope, uh, we hope hybrid, Rob, we'd like to come back in hybrid and check in with everybody, get everybody fifty percent in and see where we're at, so that's what we'd like to do.
And is that hybrid with a, you know, a synchronous approach, so that when kids are? I mean, I think, you know, just to, to be frank, I. Think there's been so much discussion about, you know, and I understand that. Teachers, you know, you got a group in front of you and you had a group that's distal through a screen. Um, and I think if you can do the best you can for the kids that are in front of you and you make it work for the kids that are, that are, are virtual, then, you know. That, that's probably better in terms of content, um, and maybe a little bit of a struggle, but. Seems like it's the way we gotta go.
Yeah, it's the best we can agree and get better at it as we go.
Steve, this is related to all schools, but before I lose it in my notes here and. Um, so I understand the idea of the tipping point and the matrix and shifting to sort more of a staffing drives the decision. Um, is that in sync with our MOA there or what's?
The, um, the matrix is not part of the MOA, that was a document for administrative discussion and guidance and, and information. Um, the, as Jim alluded to, and I can talk to it again, but it's the health safety piece of. Um, why washing hands, six feet apart, all that fun stuff, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for maybe asking again to understand this, I wish it was blown up for us on the screen because it's. I'm trying to map everything together and I apologize. Um, it's basically al- almost the same way we had before, one weekend, two weeks out, where kids are, are remote and they're learning. You know, if that's what you feel is best, I mean, I just. You know, a lot of these kids wanna be back. You know, a lot of these kids wanna be in person, a lot of these kids really wanna be able to just. See their teacher, see their friends and being one week in and one, and then two weeks out, I'm, I struggle with that.
I get it, no, I get it.
I'm just talking to you guys, I'm just like, you know, today I came here really excited, like, yeah, you know, February first, and now I'm hearing. We're gonna try and then we're going two weeks, then we're gonna reassess.
I'm with you.
And I'm just being honest with how I feel, I just really, really, really want the kids to be able to go back in there. Uh, if we have the staff, we have the capability to keep them safe and, and for them to learn. Um, we talk about mental health on this board a lot, there's kids that don't play sports, that really need to be in school.
Absolutely.
And it's, and, and, and I, and, and, and I got, I don't have a child that plays sports, but I can tell you right now. That, that a lot of his friends, a lot of people are just like, they're tired and they wanna be back in person.
No, I, I get it, and, and that passion is shared, it's how do you, you know, if we go back in, in the hybrid model, the straight eight and two days. Um, we can do that, it's just the two-day week connection right now and the best we can with synchronous. But as, as Rebecca alluded to, there is a flow to this and there is some content. It's the pressure of content, um, but I'm with you, it's, we're trying to balance it, Norm, if you feel we haven't balanced it the right way. And the board feels, it's great eight and team A, team B, we get it.
And I trust, I trust this board, I'm just giving you a perspective of what I see, and I see, I see in the community, I see with, with, with interaction with people that, that. That talk to me about them being home, you know, they, they, they want to build a learn, they wanna be, have an interaction. Um, they don't have the social atmosphere that maybe other students are and. Um, you know, it's just, that's just how I feel, you know, and I, like I said, I do trust this board, I trust you, Steve, Rebecca, I'm just sharing. My input.
Can I, can I offer, um, Norm, we'd be happy to do more, we truly do not have the staff to go full synchronous hybrid. Um, and what we learned was having kids at home for two days unstructured was not a good call either. So trying to calibrate that component into this. Um, we agree with you, we, we wanna be in probably just as much as the kids. Um, but right now. The ability to continue the, the rhythm, like the structure that we've got for kids is, is really important. Um, just having some kind of predictable pattern helps. Um, and, you know.
No, I mean.
I hear what you're saying, I, I hear what you're saying, we just don't, we don't have the staff.
No, and, and that's the answer I need, I mean, if you guys say you can't do this based on staff and.
We can't go full.
Yeah, you know, not through the flow, no.
No, full secret, because, and also, Norm, the, with the, some of the doctors. Some of the, some of the advice is if there's community widespread. Right, if the numbers are different, then they, I'm worried that we're gonna get more eighty-eight requests because now we're, we're turning into a condition that is, is, is heightened more than when we left. So, and, 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 I mean, that's just the piece, so, I mean. But I, we agree with you.
I'll dial back a little bit because, you know, just me being me, Norm being Norm, but I guess the other question I have is. You know, we agreed as a board, you know, I'm just thinking long scope, you know, risk of our students going back. We talked about that if they, they play sports, they're remote, that, that's been the agreement. What I have not heard from this board is siblings. You know, there are siblings that are playing, but how is that formula work into our decision matrix, decision process?
The recommendation regarding that is to follow state guidelines and to quarantine if we have a positive case, because if we are going to quarantine siblings. Or teachers who have kids who are, are teachers who are coaching or teachers doing that, then uh, we will have to. At the high school, we won't be able to go back in the hybrid model, we will be quarantining a number of teachers that, and we won't be able to sub for them and make it work. So uh, the, in discussion with the nurses. That for, for that component, we'll be following state, and the recommendation is to follow state guidelines regarding siblings and coaches. And other people connected to it, that if there is a positive case or if there is exposure, then it's a contact tracing. Otherwise, we won't be able to run um, our full academic program, because we like teachers coaching, but that's the.
Got it. It was a question I had asked a while ago, if you remember, you know.
That was a great question, it's appropriate question, and we had deliberate and purposeful discussions with the nurses and. The school administration and to make sure we had that answer coming to you, and the way to run, come back in school. With teachers and that is to follow state guidelines on that uh, case.
And I, I, it's just, it's just, I'm looking at the risk, you know, I mean, we, we all know and I respect this board for what they decided to move forward, I just, as someone who felt. You know, at, at that time and still now, the indoor sports wasn't a good, good opportunity, you know, for us to move forward, but. I respect it, I just, I'm looking at, you know, the risk of someone coming into the school district where I just wanna know what potentially could happen, so. Uh, I respect that, yeah.
So Rebecca, have you accounted for how you're gonna deal with the sports players for that first week of February? Who are not gonna come in, I guess?
I, I, I mean, unfortunately, I, they'll be remote, I know we're gonna have some students that choose to be full remote regardless anyway, those that probably were remote. Previous, um, we'll make sure that we do a, a pickup and a drop off. Um, so they can pick up the supplies and, and things that they need.
But there will be school even remotely.
Yep.
Every day for every student.
Yep, yep. Uh, team A, team B during that week.
Which is for everyone when you're.
They'll, so, so during that first week, um, they'll have two days of. Of time where they log into their class and they, like, they're actively part of their class. And then the other two days, they'll be doing asynchronous work.
And that's for every, I mean, so the difference is those sports kids on those days that they would be physically in will be remotely in. And then every, the other two days, everybody has two days that we, that they're not, that they're asynchronous.
Yeah, the caveat we're gonna propose, cuz again, we've, we've learned some lessons. Um, even on the asynchronous days, we're going to ask everybody to log into their class. Long enough to take attendance, have five minutes of the teacher saying, okay, here's what we want you to do during your asynchronous time. And then have them go off and do that work, um, but we'll have a, a touch point with kiddos four times throughout the day. Um, even on their asynchronous days, so they are not two days where they say, oh, I don't have school today, I'll do my work whenever.
Have show up the last five minutes that they did it. Because. I, you know, that, I found that, I mean, that was the problem with the asynchronous, you know, that really was the problem, I think. Was simp, was one of the problems at least, was accountability. And giving them too long of a time horizon to do whatever the thing was.
We're perceiving this as happening once that first week.
Yep.
And then again, we'll be able to kinda ascertain what our next rendition is, so. Um, hopefully we keep a, a, a good momentum going, um, as long as we can.
So I, I heard us talking about the twenty-five percent in, seventy-five percent out, I'm wondering, um. How, like, how flexible is that number? Can we go higher? Can we start capturing more kids, maybe they aren't super struggling, but they're not doing great? I, I'm just wondering, how wide in that can we cast and can we invite in and, and my encouragement would be. Um, you know, to, to pull in as many kids as we have staff and safe available to, to do so.
Um, pending your approval tonight of this plan, uh, Mr. Kelly and I have a survey that'll, uh, or a letter that, um. Will kind of explain all of this to parents. In that letter will be a survey that we're going to ask, one of the things we're going to ask again is. You know, do you need, do, do we need to consider your student for remote, uh, facilitated remote? So we will collect all that data, we'll, we'll spend the weekend doing.
Um, and you'll have that week to go ahead, invite, figure out our numbers, um, and see what we can balance, so. Um, we may be looking at a slightly different split for the A and B group. Um, one, he's, I'm honestly, I was really hard when one day you had it, I said twelve and it's.
Rebecca?
All males or they were all females and there was a bizarre balance. Um, so we're gonna try to, to maybe relook at our splits over the weekend, this weekend, to see. If there are some different opportunities to, to do As and Bs differently. Um, and then we will put all that information out really comprehensively to families. But yes, if we, if we, we say, um, the hundred, cuz that's about what we had interest in last time, we may have different interests this time and we'll try to kind of accommodate that.
Um, any additional questions or thoughts on, on this proposal to, for Rebecca?
For having kids in, you both listen to parents, but you reach out to kids too that you think need it, correct? Is that Rebecca?
Yes.
That or Steve, is that right?
Yep, they have the SS. A student service team meets and reviews student cases and they actually require some cases. Rebecca, you are, you must be having a problem.
Uh, yeah, Rebecca, we could hear you, but I don't know if you could hear us.
I don't know if y'all can hear me, my audio cut out, so I'm gonna leave for a minute cuz I don't wanna interrupt you.
We can hear you, we can hear you. So yes, Seth, we have a student services team that meets and um, make sure that we review a list of just our in-house data about making sure people are.
You know, I, I'll just say one thing, you know, I, I struggle with siblings, I know we're following the rules, I just, you know. Sometimes these in, students don't have, don't show it. Um, and it's, and it can be, you can start something new, I, you know, I. Really struggle with that, I, I hate denying a student. You know, an opportunity to, to learn in person, yeah, I think it's very important, but you know, this board. Decided to move forward with sports and, and, and that's something that, you know, we agree, you guys agree upon. But I really do struggle with the potential of, um, there being an outbreak in our schools with. A student maybe not so accepted, and that's, that's just how, how I feel.
And, no, I get it, if we wanna quarantine kids and coaches and all that, that's fine, that just has an impact on our ability to deliver in-person instruction. It's all balance and tension.
I got you, yep.
Um, I don't wanna cut off this conversation short, um, you know, but there's no other, I guess, questions. Um, now on the sort of secondary model, I wonder if we wanna, um, just, you know, ask questions or explore the, the elementary model? Um, and anything on our mind as we, as we look at that? And so, and we can start with Steve and then I can think if, if there's a need to bring anybody else in it.
I can bump him.
Why don't you do that now, yeah?
Yeah, I'll bump him. I, well, I almost, sometimes it, I love to have the experience, sometimes it moves the last step. Um, sure, and, and Amy and Bill can speak to it, um, certainly very anxious to get all the littles back. Um, teachers back and um, do their model of, right, fifty percent every other day. Certainly prioritizing and what you've heard, the necessary prioritize literacy and numeracy, but Bill and Amy can both speak to. What they've learned and what they'd like to, you know, what, what's going to happen February one.
Should I start, Mr. Chamberlain?
Sure, Mr. Grove.
Okay, um, well, certainly we're looking forward to coming back February one, I think it'll look. Uh, pretty much the same as uh, when we went uh, full remote. Um, where we'll have uh, team A and team B, um. Tuesday and Thursday, team A, Wednesday, Friday, Friday, team B, uh, Monday alternating A and B, uh, we're gonna start on February one with team B. Um, one of my goals uh, tomorrow and next week, early next week, is really to come up with a packet of reminders. Um, sort of for myself, but also staff and, and community, everything from drop off and pickup, cuz it's, it's been a while. Uh, and for staff, you know, the duty schedule, get that out again and all those sort of things. Um, we, we do suspect, I was talking to Joe Montana, our behavior specialist today, I, I do suspect that some kids are gonna have some troubles. Uh, you know, especially coming in, um, if they haven't been coming in at all. Um, but we're ready for that and looking forward to, to helping them uh, make the. The transition from, from being home all the time to uh, being uh, at school much of the time. Um, one thing we've decided, by the way, uh, is to keep Chromebooks at home. Uh, we are not going to be asking parents to bring them back. Uh, I'm guessing until the end of the year, uh, not just because, you know, it's possible we may go remote again, although I hope not. Um, but because we can utilize those on the home days. Uh, frankly, we really don't want kids to be in their faces and screens while they're at school in person very much. On maybe occasions where they are, but we wanna keep that to a minimum. Uh, home days, uh, for, I think more for grades two and three might utilize some of the Chromebooks and digital technology. Uh, we're still gonna rely a lot on paper for the home days, which uh, for the primary kids, especially K one, but really K three. Um, is really PK three is really a big part of their job. Um, is to prepare uh, families for those packets and to make them high quality and make the paper valuable. Uh, those of you who aren't Harold Martin people, um, might not know, but every teacher has a big bucket. Um, as do especially the teachers and the interventionists, you know, the reading people and math people. And we fill those buckets regularly for pickup often on the weekends, so that'll be an important part of what we do too, and I think. Um, especially K one digital is just not enough, and so that's why. So uh, in summary, I, I think it'll look a lot like it, it did before. Um, I am just slightly worried, not really worried, but I just wanna make sure we're prepared uh, for the transition, um, for all of us, I think. I'm, speaking personally, I, I've been going in every day, um, because there's a few kids in from time to time and. Uh, it's just, it's good for me uh, to be in the building anyway, and um, I'm just so looking forward to the, the hallways being uh, busy once again.
Well, I, I just wanna say, the parent of Harold Martin, you know, the way you have things organized over there has been great, being able to pick it up, pick everything up, so thank, thank you very much. Um, the question that's been asked over and over again to this board is, how are we going to? Adapt to the students from K one, K, you know, one through two that are, we are staying behind remotely? How are we gonna get them up to speed in order to um, meet those needs? Maybe they have not been getting since we've done remote or even, you know, during this whole pandemic, it's been a question I can't answer. Um, but, you know, a lot of parents out there feel that, you know, that their kids are maybe haven't gotten. Um, everything that they, they should be getting.
I, I think they're, they're hopefully getting what we can give them for uh, instruction. Um, but I do agree with a lot of the sentiments I've heard from the public tonight and, and Norm, from what you're saying right now, um, I've already started. The conversation, literally started a couple Google Docs, um, with um, uh, a couple staff members and we're gonna move on from that too. Uh, it's some sort of catch-up program and I, I don't know exactly how it's gonna look, I would love, and I've talked to Steve about this too, I'd love to utilize some. Uh, well, probably S R money maybe coming in, uh, I don't know how much it's going to be to. Um, utilize uh, some of that to, to hire people to come in a little bit this summer. Uh, this is just, you know, please don't hold me to this, but I think, you know, even. Um, helping parents a little bit this summer, you know, teaching them a little bit about. Probably could've done this a year ago, right, uh, literacy and numeracy and, and some things they could do to help their children, but. Really, it, it's gonna take some strong, uh, maybe small group uh, instruction for kids and, and. instruction for kids and not just special ed kids, not just kids that, that are identified in some capacity, but you know, a lot of kids, if not most kids need something. So it's on our minds and I think it'll change, even if we're back 100% next year, I think it's going to change some of our instruction and priorities going into next year. So Andrea earlier tonight talked about how, you know, there are a lot of things that's going on that the public doesn't know. We don't talk about the scoop and skim and so on. We probably wouldn't have enough time, but this is one of those things that there's a lot of discussion, you know, like I talked about this topic with this week, my Harold Martin Assessment Committee, with my Remote Learning Committee, with my PLC leaders. So there really is a lot of discussion, a lot of seriousness around this. You have to understand a lot of teachers at the primary level, especially since we have been for the last 10, 15 years, really looking at numerical data, numerical data. There's actually a little competition in a positive way. Teachers want to see those numbers go up. They want to see the data do well. So the other thing I think we need to do is, is figure out where kids are at right now. Probably by the end of the year, we'll have a pretty good sense of what our challenge is. So I don't have any great, perfect answers right now, but I can tell you we're, we're working on it.
No, just to sum it up, I mean, Steve has made the case that, you know, through data, we've needed to hire a new numeracy system. And this is all part of our budget and process where to all 76 attendees, I mean, this is, this is stuff that we are seeing from our leadership saying that we need another numeracy system in this district in order to meet the needs of students who are lagging behind from being remote.
Agreed. Bill, I'm just, just thinking about what you just said last and later. I'm just curious, like, how do you, how do you intend, you know, as you sort of figure out, you know, what, what sort of the future looks like? How do you intend to communicate that with parents? So I think part of, you know, part of, I think the communication that we've been receiving is, you know, parents hungry to understand, you know, what, what those steps are. And so I'm just, I understand you've been working with your leadership team, trying to figure that out, but I'm just, and I guess it's unfair to ask you that, for an answer right now. So maybe it's more like, I think, you know, parents are hungry for that communication. And so as you're developing it, I guess my encouragement is to, you know, to share that because I do think rightly so, parents are concerned. They're anxious and I think the more that, you know, you and your team can help them understand, you know, what steps you're taking, I think would help a lot.
Yeah, I, I think transparency is the most important thing. You know, we may have to, there's some news that may not be great for all kids, but we have to be honest with, with parents and, and say, you know, this is where your child is at and this is where we hope they're going to be. I mean, the one, it's not really a saving grace, but I think all children are probably a little behind. So I think we have a, a challenge that is for all of us as opposed to, you know, you know, a small group. But I think transparency is the most important thing. And so as I'm thinking about this, almost on the spot, I'm thinking, you know, by the end of the year, we certainly would want to communicate to parents pretty bluntly where we think their children are at and, and, you know, by that point, we got to have a plan for how we're going to, you know, catch them up to some extent. I think it's not going to be probably quite as serious as, as parents think. Kids are pretty resilient and they do catch up quickly. I reminded of a student who years ago, this is just one example, but he was, he was homeschooled and this is not a slam on homeschoolers. Most parents do an incredible job, but this particular parent knew it wasn't working and they, they didn't know how to teach literacy. They were great in other content areas. And he started out extremely low and he gained like two grade levels in a matter of months because he had the capacity to do it and he had good teaching. And that was the ability to do it. And now he's, he's just perfectly grade level and doing fine. So I, I think, I feel very positive that we have the staff, we have the resources to make it happen. But it'll take a little bit of time though. It'll probably take a full year for us to, to come close to catching up, I would think.
Bill, I'm going to jump in on the same. So, you know, I'm listening to you and thinking about the difficulties of making this all happen, but I'm also thinking about the timetables and that it would be probably a really good thing to, to at least lay out a rubric and a timetable of, you know, these are the possible options, these are the potential obstacles, whether that's financing, testing, but it would seem to me that might put parents at ease that if they saw some kind of a timetable as to this is what our potential possibilities are by April break perhaps, then, you know, the end of the year just seems really far away to wait to see what that is. But if in April we said, okay, this is, these are the plans and then, you know, in May, there's going to be some testing and these are the possible ways. Then I think, you know, maybe that'd help everybody see what the future might look like a little bit better. But I mean, I for one would love to see some kind of a timetable that lays out what the plan is and not holding you to what that is, because I know there's a lot of moving parts there, but at least to put the options on the table would be probably very much appreciated.
Yeah, I, I think we could have a plan in place by, say, April vacation. What I don't know is if we can have, I kind of want to have a solid sense of, of the challenge per student. That might take into May or so. I'm just thinking in terms of the actual assessments. I want to get, I want to get some good in-person instruction going here real soon and a little bit of time to do that. But in terms of a plan, and some of it's going to depend on what we can get for money from, from, you know, grants and so on too, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, so I just had a question. What, so what sort of assessments do you use? Like, you know, I know at, you know, actually a couple of years ago, you, you and Amy did a whole presentation on assessments to the PTA. But I don't remember everything. So for the younger kids, what, what kind of assessments do we do? And I also want to acknowledge the challenge of doing assessments during a pandemic and during a time when kids have been out, will give you data, but it may not give you the most accurate data.
Sure. Little, little guys, say kindergarten kids. We do a lot of checklisty things, you know, sounds, you know, obviously uppercase lowercase letters, you know, things like that. They do take the star, not for math, but for literacy. They take the star test even in K. One to three, they, all kids take the star for math and reading. We, we also do, probably one of the best things we do is what we call our benchmarks, which come from a duo called Fontes and Pennell. In the old, old days, it was called the DRA, but very similar. And that's where we, we get a really good sense of what reading level they're, they're reading on. And one of the best advantages of F and P, Fontes and Pennell is that, that teachers do it one-on-one. And, you know, special ed teachers will tell you this too, the teacher who does the, the actual assessment also learns so much about the child and it helps them with their instruction. So don't get me started, you know, Amy and I could talk all night about these sort of topics. We have to do a podcast again soon, Amy, that way we can talk about it more, but you know, those are the assessments that really work. So it, we, what's difficult right now is we don't have as many Chromebooks as we'd like to have because they're home. So we have some logistical issues, but I think we get a really good sense of where a child is at through our other assessments as well. So some are, you know, computerized a star. You sit down and you on an iPad or a Chromebook or a computer and, and you take it. And it's, I think fairly accurate. And then the Fontes and Pennell is much more teacher to student. And then you get a, you get a reading level as a result from that. And that drives your instruction, basically. Amy, do you want to add to that?
Oh yeah, I, you know, at Maple Street and can, should I start from the beginning like Bill did and let you know my, our plan? Or do you have other questions for Bill before I jump in?
We might, but I think you, you have the floor, so you should jump in.
Okay. So at, at Maple Street, we will run a similar program that Bill talked about. Our Team A, Team B back in the building, starting with Team A, I'm sorry, starting with Team B on Monday, February 1. You know, as Bill mentioned, we're putting together the skim to push out to parents to let them know of things like to fill out the COVID screener before you come into the building. The kinds of things that your student will need if they're in the hybrid model, masks, water bottle, personal hand sanitizer, you know, we've been out of those routines. So we'll be sending out some information to families tomorrow and then over the course of next week. We too will be looking at keeping Chromebooks at home. There, there are some students that I think may prefer to bring their device back and forth. And certainly, you know, I think because they're a little older, you know, that they can take those responsibility. We have deployed Chromebooks in, you know, great cases. So especially our sixth graders, if they're more comfortable using the device that they will then use at home. I think we would support that effort. For those home days, I think that Maple Street will be a little different than Harold in that I, I do think that the, a lot of the instruction will be pushed out digitally through Google Classroom. We have found during this period of remote learning that fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, they are readily able to access their, the content, their assignments, the additional support materials through that, through that platform. But we certainly will be sending home, you know, we call it DLI, which is grammar and spelling practice through our, a paper means, sending home math workbooks, sending home books to read for their book groups. So certainly there will be a paper component, but I do think that kids will still be using their devices on their home days. We are though looking, like Bill, I have a PLC, set of PLC leaders and steering committee that meets and we happened to meet today. And really talking about how can we keep purposeful connection with kids when they are at, on their home days? I think it'll be too much for kids to bear to be so connected to their, to their teachers and their classmates as they have been for us to just, you know, for that to drop off. So we are looking at how can we continue to do things like morning meeting, snack and lunch during the day. And then some kind of closing or culminating activity at the end of the day. At Maple Street, you know, we have really tried to keep kids connected during the day. I happened to to pop into a student, to a teacher's classroom today when they were doing snack and, and kids were just really enjoying each other's time. I mean, the fact that, you know, they were all little, you know, screen pictures on the screen, but they're, you know, playing, playing a game together, talking about what they're going to do after. It was very similar. The conversations are very similar that to what you would overhear it when things are in person. So I think it's important to continue to offer those, you know, social, emotional and, and personal connections to students. To answer your question about how will we, you know, how will we bridge those curriculum gaps? I mean, that is a really interesting question and one that there's just so, you know, so many professionals and educators are writing about it right now because the reality is, is that our kids during this time have developed skills that we, we've never assessed for, right? They're, they're doing things and they have skill sets that aren't being assessed on the star or aren't being assessed in other ways because we weren't providing instruction in that way. But you know, their ability to, you know, you know, get into a Google Classroom, navigate that, look at, you know, multiple assignments at once, submit an assignment, videotape themselves doing something. And those are, are things that aren't in the Common Core standards. But wow, I mean, they have gained a lot of skills. So I think when we look at where are, what are the specific skills that kids are missing, you are going to see it in math, no, no doubt, right? Because if they're not receiving the instruction and, and, you know, Steve and I were both math teachers, you know, teaching fractions, you know, today I saw, you know, a teacher getting ready to teach a lesson on subtracting mixed numbers with renaming. That is a really hard skill to teach even in person. But, you know, they were able to use online manipulatives, videos and, you know, having the teacher there is, is, is helpful. I do think we're going to have to use our assessments. So at Maple Street, we use STAR. We also use AmesWeb, which is a, another tool that we have. We also have thought about using the state testing. They have interim assessments. And we're lucky enough to have like Rebecca Gagnon is an assessment guru, you know, she knows about that kind of stuff and figuring out how to really hone in on the skills that kids need. And then, you know, just being honest with either the, the spending teacher that you're sending your students to or the, your receiving teacher really looking at, you know, these kids did a lot of, you know, the, the types of skills that are, are, you know, more conducive to teaching in a remote environment. But saying just honestly, we did not, you know, this, these kids are going to need a refresher on fractions. And the next teacher is going to have to accommodate for that. And you saw teachers do this during the years that we were transitioning to the Common Core. We did a lot of crosswalk work where you're looking at, you know, what are the standards? What were they? How do we get from here to there? You know, in my previous position as a, as a math teacher, we looked at a three-year plan. So we were very purposeful about identifying the skills that needed to be re-taught and practiced and who was going to do it, who was going to own it. We developed a crosswalk document. You know, the difference here is we don't have a curriculum person, you know, in, in where I came from in Bo, we had a curriculum director that that was their job to develop those documents. So that's, you know, just being honest, that's problematic because you don't have someone spearheading that work. But it was really helpful and, but there were a lot of conversations in the summer. You know, you, you really have to provide teachers the time because they can't do the in-person instruction right now and, you know, develop, at least it's my opinion, you know, that they would need opportunities to really come together and collaborate in the summer. And that's above and beyond, you know, what they're doing. We just couldn't manage that. I do think we can do the assessments as Bill's talked about between now and, you know, our, our spring benchmarks. You know, we'll be able to identify the kids that need that above and beyond extended school year, I think will look really different across the district. Mandy's got some really great ideas about how that's going to look. It's a really capable team of people. It's just, you know, I, I think we're still in that phase where we need to get people vaccinated back in, in, in persons, you know, so that we can really dig into what is happening. So I'm not sure I answered all of the questions that I was trying to take notes as, as I went to try to give this comprehensive an answer as Bill has given, but if you have other questions for me, I'm, I'm happy to take them.
Amy did great.
Yeah, you always answer the question before I ask it, but will you be able to provide something similar what Rob's asked for Bill, kind of for us and Bill, look at both schools? That way in April, this board can look at the data and say, okay, this is where we need to look at in order to determine our next move. Is that possible?
I, I think so. We have really capable literacy team at both buildings that are, you know, very invested in that type of curriculum work. Jess Pickering, our new numeracy specialist, she, you know, really can dig right into lots of different types of data. It'll just be, I think, revealing and figuring out what we're going to prioritize. Because I, I do think that a lot of things are going, you know, that there will be different areas that, that hit. And so when you first look at a set of data, it almost looks like a, you know, a set, a Christmas tree, right? We're lighting up for fractions. We're going to be lighting up for, you know, nonfiction text or, you know, you just said, but you only have a finite amount of time. So it'll be, you know, how do we want to prioritize that? But I think we could get some kind of document out and you know, you know that Bill and I work very well together and I'm sure we'll collaborate on this and put out something to the elementary families that is cohesive and also is more K to six than it is like, this is what kindergarten will look like. This is what second grade, because that's, that's not good for, for parents. They just, you know, they want something that's comprehensive. So I think, you know, I'm looking at Bill, we can work on that together and put something out. But also, also knowing just one more, it, it'll have to be, you know, flexible or organic, right? Because we would put something out, but we have to be responsive to the data that we collect.
Yeah. And then as Bill alluded to, and Michelle's doing research, the next stage of the grant funds are catch-up learning is an appropriate use of those funds as well as of course PPE and others. But there will be some funds that can be allocated for this catch-up notion.
Any other concerns, thoughts, questions while we have Bill and Amy?
I have another kind of like random disparate questions. And Amy, you, you sort of touched on one. I guess for, for both schools, when we return to hybrid, kind of the opportunities for any, and I'm going to call it synchronous at-home days. I know it's very, very different from middle, high school, and I'm not asking for that. But as far as the, the check-ins, the morning meetings, or I know sometimes one of my children will check in with NIA and just loves that. So I didn't know if there are any other ideas on that. Just, I'm just trying to think of more ways for kids to continue having a touch point with the, with the schools.
We do do some of that. I can't say it's everybody. Some of our kids who struggle the most, we actually do have an IA or two that works in that grade level that does touch in with kids and provides sort of office hours. Ironically, most of our, not ironically, but a lot of our intervention from reading and even special ed actually happens online on the home days, which has worked out really well. It's one of those, the few things that at times has actually been better or certainly better than being in person with masks and behind a shield. That one-to-one intervention has worked out fairly well for a lot of kids, more than we expected, actually. Not that I want to replace anything. Not that I want to replace anything in person with that. But yeah, I think I'm constantly thinking, Andrew, about how we can improve those, those days. Of course, part of the problem is teachers are still teaching on those days. So they, they can't, you know, leave their classroom to, to touch base. And it's not like we have a lot of IAs, you know, just hanging around. But, but I, yeah, we'll think more about that and try to maximize that as much as we can.
But, but Andrea, it's not lost on, you know, the staff and that really have, you know, they really enjoyed having the consistent connection with their students, right? You know, we went from, you know, you, you might have a Team B on a Thursday, you don't see them again until the, the Tuesday because it's not their Monday day. And, you know, to be able to see kids every day, I mean, that is what, or, or to at least be connected to someone at their school because you know, even though it's remote and even though we're not together physically, it's really important that kids know that they belong at their school. You know, that is, you know, a, a utmost importance, I think, to teachers, to administrators. I know that, you know, the, the idea of, you know, caring for kids, whether they're on the screen or in person. There's just no replacement for that and connection. It has, it has to continue to happen. But having the staffing to do it is, is going to be the challenge, right? Because the majority of the instructional assistants in, in my building are assigned to a student for one-to-one support. And so they just don't have the time in their schedule. But we, you know, we are creative people. We're flexible. We're nimble. We're going to do our best.
Great. And so my other question, like I said, they're, they're kind of disparate questions. So I know we've been talking about assessments and I know that we're, we've generally been, and I appreciate this about our school. We're not like, we're not numbers chasers. We don't, we don't go chasing numbers. But I, I do wonder if there would be a way, if you were able to, to help show us a general understanding of where our kids were and where they are now. I, I think that could also help inform this discussion because, you know, when we're having these discussions, I don't know if we're talking about kids being a couple of weeks behind or if they are, you know, a grade level behind. And I, I feel like that nuance, even if it's a, a real generalization, just helps inform the conversation. So that's kind of a, a, a general ask, I guess.
Yeah. The tricky thing about that is going to be that the test that we use, you know, however they're referenced, the sample, all of those kids have been impacted by the pandemic as well. So your, your data is going to be skewed. We certainly, you know, we don't tend to look at, you know, fourth grade to fourth grade. We tend to look, we tend to follow that grade and their, their, their progress over time. But, you know, the STAR test, it bases, it, the results are based on the sample that's taking the test. So, you know, all the kids are impacted. So, and the New Hampshire SAS as well, we did the interim test and you can get interesting data from that. It's, it is much more, you know, more global about kids functioning because it is, there's a lot of open-ended responses. Our STAR is more standards-based and then our Ames Web is more skill-based. So I do think we can get good results from there. But I don't know, Andrea, I think what I'm imagining as a math teacher is that you're almost looking for like a spreadsheet or a line graph that shows in the fall of this, this is where you were and this is where you are now. I would just worry about, you know, that comparison not having the same standard deviations, you know, in terms of groups of, of students. But I think what we could do is, you know, look at all of the information that we have and try to put something together that makes sense to parents. The, the state data also was developed, you know, that, that what they're going to put out is, is based on, we didn't have a spring test. And so it's interim data. So that's a little tricky as well, but I think we can put together something. I just worry about, you know, you can, I always, you know, I always talk to kids about, you know, you can use data to say anything you wanted to say. You know, I don't want to be misleading. I want to be very transparent about, you know, what the numbers are telling us, but keeping in mind that the data, that the, the tools that we use inform instruction. We don't use them, you know, to, to identify, you know, weaknesses in students. We use it to inform our instruction.
Yeah, I think even qualitatively, instead of quantitatively, you know, I would be very much open to that as well, just qualitatively. The story, the narrative, where, where are we? I, I just think that it's really easy for us to, you know, let, let our, our imagination run wild and assume the worst and assume that our kids are doing the worst. And so I, I think just helping to kind of craft where exactly we are. I don't need, I don't need a, a graph. You don't have to bring me actual numbers. But I think just, I would love just a better understanding of where we are. And it, and, and it can be in story form. It doesn't have to be in, in a bar graph.
Yeah. I think, and Amy would agree with me, our teachers are, are pretty experienced. They have a really good sense and intuition on where kids are at. And again, I don't want to say it tonight because I, I think they just need to get the kids back in the classroom. That's why I mentioned before, we'll have a really good idea after a few months. It might even be till May in terms of, of how much we need to worry. But I do trust, we often say, good assessment just informs intuition. So teacher intuition is pretty powerful and that's a qualitative factor, really.
Other, other thoughts or questions? Anything else, Bill and Amy, for us that you, that you haven't shared that is on your mind that, that you would like to?
Want me to bump them?
Steve's very excited about, about bumping.
I, I think they want to go back to their, but no, thank you so much, Bill and Amy. You did a great job.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, you know, this is maybe just a question that, just for the board. You know, we've heard from all the, you know, the building leadership on sort of their plans for coming back. I guess just doing a, I don't know what the right term is, but how, how are we all feeling about this? As we sort of head into, you know, February. And then, you know, what things should we be thinking about or, or asking Steve to think about? As we sort of get beyond, you know, the first couple of weeks there in February, then we might be looking for in terms of, you know, Andrea's brought out some ideas. Rob, you have as well as around, you know, what happens? You know, when can we get a report by April? Just wondering if there's other things on our minds that we want to sort of put out as markers or things to continue sort of discuss and think about as we head, you know, through February into March in the spring.
Guess the big one for me, Jim and, and Steve is, you know, what, what role vaccines will play in changing our, our playbook, you know, if if all teachers can get vaccinated, you know, by April vacation, does that completely change what May and June can look like? I mean, I know that students, you know, there aren't vaccines for kids under 16 and, you know, I, I just, I don't know what the guidance is out there. I, well, I know what some of the guidance is, but you know, how, how does that change the game?
And I've been talking with the nurses, the, the protocol is 10 days after the second vaccination is the all-clear, you know, when you're considered vaccinated. So, you know, so that's where we work back, you know, from that notion. So, you know, we hope you know, March, we've heard for that, right? For that phase and how long March is, but I agree with you, the, the bet, it would be great if we could get that 10 days, you know, post-second vaccination component. You know, April vacation-ish. And yeah, I do think it would, it, it leaves open for us to, to some, you know, substantially look at our model. That's the hope. Plus, you know, all this stuff we liked about the fall, Rob, right? Windows were open all the time. We're outside as much as possible. I mean, in the fall, our teachers were out all the time. All those really good, wonderful health practices anyway, combined with, you know, in, in that environment. We hope that that does give us a chance to change our, our model in a good way. I'm with you.
We have to negotiate new MOA with them based on them getting vaccines, all that stuff. Maybe requiring all that stuff. I mean, is that something that goes into in order for us to maybe have to look at that, Jim? I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I'm talking out of line here. I'm just trying to to get feel for what is the, I know that underlying health conditions have been bumped up and we have a significant amount of teachers that have qualified for that. If they're bumped up to that tier, doesn't that change a little bit of the staffing issue that we have here in the district?
No, I'm with you, right? If, if, if those staff members through other categories are eligible for the vaccine, how does that impact their eligibility under ADA? That's a great question. Norm, that's something we're starting to have discussions with as a leadership team. As a vaccine has more, but I think you're right on. That certainly would, would be an, you know, factor as we head back into, you know, more, more staff in school.
Yeah. And I think, Norm, do you have a, just, I think as circumstances change on the ground, you know, if, if teachers are vaccinated and getting vaccinated, then, you know, that in my view, that's, that's grounds for us to go back to the, to the MOA and have a discussion about, you know, what do those changes mean to our, to our model and to, you know, amount of students we can bring back into the building? And so that would be, in my view, one of those major factors that would help, help the change sort of how we're thinking about this. But it's hard to do that now because, you know, we, we don't know what the vaccination model is. We don't know when teachers are going to be eligible. We don't really eligible. We don't really have a timeframe. We have some general parameters, but, but until we get some more of those, I guess, fundamental reality of, of when those things might, might change. It's, it's hard to go and renegotiate an MOA or open it back up if, if it's unclear if and when, you know, the circumstances would allow. So, and that was part of the discussion that we had with the associations is that, you know, as, as things change, we'd come back to the table and, and have those discussions. And so my expectation and hope is that those fundamentals do change and do change quickly so that we can go back to the table and, and, and revisit it all.
Because then that eliminates staffing, you know, as, as, as some of the issues. And that's what we want. We want to be able to secure.
I agree.
There's two other things that I think would be helpful. And it's, it's, it's hard to say what the timing is on it, but you know, at least what we're hearing out of, out of the new administration in, in Washington is that there's going to be a lot more guidance. You know, one of the things personally that I felt was completely missing over the past year was any sort of guidance coming out of, you know, coming out of Washington, but even guidance coming out of the state of New Hampshire for how, how districts should be planning and thinking and but it, that, it feels like anyway, at least the rhetoric is that's going to change and that there's going to be a lot more, you know, trying coordination and planning. I wouldn't say instruction, but at least guidance for how, how districts should be thinking about, you know, incorporating some of the best practices and, and returning to school. And so I would just, I, I would appreciate, because I can't, it's hard to keep up with all the news all the time. But as, as Steve, you and your team are, are getting some of that information, both from, you know, both from Washington and also from here in New Hampshire. If somehow that could be shared, I think with the board and the community, because I do, at least maybe it's my optimistic side. My optimistic side tells me that, that there's going to be a lot more and it's, it's, it's going to be actionable stuff that, that we can start to incorporate into our planning and thinking. And so if you do receive that, if, if maybe it's just putting it into the, the shared folder, I think would just be really helpful in between meetings as we're, as we're all contemplating what happens next.
You got it. Happy to.
Anything else? Go ahead, Andrea.
I was going to pop in. I guess I'd like to learn a little bit more about what our summer programming needs are and what that's going to look like. And if we do need to start thinking now about extending the extended program. And how we can do that. You know, that's, that's something that I'm thinking about. I, I like and encourage, you know, the middle high school to pull in as many, a high as percentage of children as possible into, in school during these kind of our new hybrid that we're going into. Yeah, those are my, my two main ones. I know, you know, I know we've, I've also thought and talked about, we've gone back and forth and I understand that a, a lot of it is really a childcare issue. You know, I, I know that I've asked again about the possibility of going to half-days. But that was not for, for our, our Harold Martin School and it was not well-received. I remember those hours and hours and hours of public comments of folks not supporting that, the half-days. But I do, I, I would ask that we just remain at least open to some other possibilities as we move forward. Whether it's getting our kids outdoors in classrooms as much as possible. You know, just really trying to, to capture these kids as best as we can. It took us a long time to get to this point with 400,000 people who have died from COVID. You know, it took 10 months. So I, I think, you know, I'm reminded of when I had kids and I was told, look, it took nine months for my body to get all crazy stretched out from being pregnant. You can't expect everything to snap back right away. And that, that might be a metaphor that, or analogy that only resonates with women who have had children. But, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking ahead of a, a longer runway, not just the summer. It's going to be next year. You know, really we're looking at like a two-year kind of catch-up phase. I guess my, my optimism comes from the fact that when we moved here, my kindergartner was not reading and hated school. We moved in the middle of January. And now several years later is, is caught up and is loving school again. So I guess I take that personal anecdote to heart. But at the same time, when we're talking about a majority of our school, it's really hard to, to have that same optimism and hope, but I will carry it. So those are just a couple of other things I was thinking about.
And we can, because there are, once we get the funding, there are some decisions that are, there are time-based regarding a bargaining agreement. And how we engage or actually can, you know, compel or require or just encourage staffing over the summer. And, and so I, I think this discussion and Amy and Bill and Rebecca and Chris, and I think they have started thinking about this catch-up model. And I think this helps us continue to plan. And you're right. The more information the community, the better as they are dealing with, with the trauma and concern about, worried about the most precious cargo in the world and their academic performance. I'm with you. I think this conversation's been really good. So thank you.
You know, and I, you know, I agree a little bit what you say, Andrew. I just, I just hope it's not two years. I hope that we can try and do it appropriately and at a good pace where these students are able to that the last, we don't know, we don't have the report, but I'm, I'm, it's a concern for me too.
I agree. I just want us to also have reasonable expectations. And it's, and hoping for a catch-up over 12 weeks in the summer may not be reasonable. I doubt it is reasonable. It took us 10 months to get here. It's going to take us some time to get back out of it.
Yeah. And I agree with you. I just don't know what the window is. I just want to be optimistic also.
And the last question I have for everybody, because we, we talked about it, but I'm not sure we, we came to a consensus. And so Steve talked about the matrix and maybe thinking about the decision matrix a little bit differently. And so Steve, he laid out, you know, how he would be approaching it. And I just, I, I just wanted to see how, how folks felt about that. And if there's any, you know, strong feelings and objection or, or anything we want to revisit and talk about.
I thought we had agreed previously that the matrix was a guide, not a rigid model and that administration should use it as a way to focus their thinking, but not dictating decision.
No, no, Seth, yes, but there was a limit based, and I think the direction was with very few cases. It could be managed on a case-by-case, but once we got up to, you know, where we were, then it was to follow the matrix and you know, five or more we had talked about. So, I mean, for example, I just want, if, if we had, you know, three at Maple and two at Harold Martin, that right now would be closing the district until further notice. And based on this discussion, the high school would still run. If there's so many contact tracing and the connections and siblings and all that. I just want to make sure, I appreciate Jim, you know, clarifying this because it, you know, we're going to, the, the philosophy would be to stay in as long as we can. Stand staffing and safety. And if, if we can't determine our contact tracing, we're going to close further until we're sure, right? But we're going to come back and not sweep the entire district into a remote piece because of something going on in second or third grade. I just.
Yeah. So in my opinion, you should, you should use the matrix as a guide, but you should be using the collective wisdom of your leadership and health team to make these decisions.
Yeah, I'm just going to just say to you, I'm Steve. Thank you. I know that this is not easy and I know it's hard to come up with the right path. And the questions we've asked you tonight have been difficult and I may not have the answer, but I just want to say thank you to your team for presenting what you can. It's a unique time for us. So thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going back to the matrix, but I appreciate you. I'm sorry, I'm going back to the matrix, but I appreciate you as well. I I I think that honestly, if you can use it as on a micro level as possible, that would be great. So if you have two cases and they are in one class, only that class closes down and the rest of the grade stays open and the rest of the kids stay in. If contact tracing does not say that it has gone outside of that classroom, I feel that we know more about COVID now than we did when we were starting to adopt the matrix. I also think that it is perhaps spread differently than we anticipated that it would. It hasn't looked like it would, at least I can speak for myself. I kind of assumed much more of a very quick viral spread throughout schools, and we've happily not seen that. I think a good part due to our distancing and masking and whatnot. But I would really love to see it sort of used even more. I think Jim says this as a scalpel than as a broadsword.
And that's the discussion with the nurses, especially at the elementary school where there's a different level of cohort. The high school, we've talked about, they change classes. So the elementary, I think we have a build, a stronger ability to, I guess, the scalpel, as you just said. At high school, though, when we do get, you know, 250 people and there's a lot of crosswork, just that was a discussion with Amy, Jean, and Nicole.
And, you know, I'm just, I'm I'm happy, you know, that you and your leadership team and nurses are having these discussions. And, you know, I just go back to, you know, risk management and risk assessment and balancing that and like what I what I think is the need to keep as many students in the classroom as we can. And so so doing that safely is important, but in, you know, the matrix is a risk management assessment tool. And so I'm 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 trying to weigh more heavily on the in-student learning. And so I think Andrea's scalpel analogy is really good. So with a focus on in-person, you know, use the the matrix to help us, help us keep people safe through a scalpel approach rather than, I like the broadsword. I usually use sledgehammer, but to that approach, which I think now, given where we are and given where the community is with spread, I think that's probably the right approach. Because if we use a sledgehammer, it's unlikely we'll see kids in the classroom, so.
And and just to reiterate, these, this is not a decision I make by myself hanging out. You know, and Rob's talked about this, we've all talked about this, is with nurses, with administration, with Michelle, if we're talking about cleaning and where we are, it really is a team decision about our judgment. Can we be safe, as Andrew just said, with our masking, with our distancing, with the trying to get as much in as we can for as long as we can until we can't?
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. We're going to move on unless there's any objection to an update from Norm on the budget committee meetings that he's had. He's had two, the 13th and the 20th. And so Norm, we're going to hand it over to you to tell us the magic you've been working.
Yeah, deep breath. Here we go. Now, first off, I want to say thank you to the board for helping, you know, during the process of going to the budget committee, you know, from Rob, Andrea, Jim, Steph, all of you guys have had a huge impact in presenting our budget to the budget committees. It's been an interesting couple of weeks. I think great discussions, great talks, you know, with the budget committee on many different things. I will say they've been very pleased with our new report mechanism that we've presented to them with a different format. And I want to acknowledge that, you know, this is what we did as a board, the five of us. We came up with a new format that we delivered to the budget committee, which, you know, they didn't have a whole lot of questions. And the questions they've had, they've asked, Steve and Michelle and myself, Rob, Andrew and Jim, we've all delivered the questions they needed. You know, we have some additional questions that we have to answer next week regarding the teacher's contract that, you know, they asked about last night that Steve and Michelle will work on. But the the big feeling around the table is the 8% tax rate impact. And, you know, they keep circling that on their on on the radar as opposed to the overall budget increase. And I've been trying to wrap my head around the best approach in order to deliver a follow-up next week to them for them to understand that, you know, as a board, we have delivered a budget that meets, you know, the needs of the students, all respect and the taxpayers on limited resources. We are, you know, the the big factor is at the state level. We are $800,000 short, you know, in order. That makes our tax rate 8%. You know, I'm open to this board for giving me a recommendation to to bring to the budget committee in order to make a a case to why it's important that they approve the budget that we've we presented to them. They know, they know our fixed, our fixed costs that are required. You know, they know everything that we put into this budget that made made it a required increase. I mean, there's, there's no fluff. As discussed, it's basically last year's budget plus a couple of additional things that we needed for the district and IA, you know, cost transportation, just other stuff. It's just lack of revenue. So I I'm thinking about unpacking it a little bit for them to look at, you know, the cost of our operating account, you know, as a increase this to show them and that at the local level, we can't solve a loss that result at the state level. So, you know, that was the first thing that we, that's the first thing I can think of that they keep going, going at is 8% on the tax rate. Well, for us as a board, we have been talking about the increase on the budget and with the bond. To be open to, they, there's been all the questions about the budget. There are just standard questions. I mean, Steve, I mean, I don't know what else I've missed. I mean, they keep going back to the 8%. We've answered every question. I've given them an opportunity, you know, for anything that we could provide to them. And, you know, I'm open to this board if there's a way to unpack this so they can understand how important it is to pass this budget.
Rob, did you, you took yourself off mute, Simon, if you wanted to add something?
I did. So I I was listening in last night to sort of the summary piece where a lot of the budget committee had shared their thoughts with where they're at, and I agree with Norm that there's, there's a, you know, an emphasis on the 8%. And but I think the emphasis is not on the 8% where they're saying you need to cut this because it's 8%. I think their concern is, can you pass a budget that shows an 8% increase? And will people vote for it? So I think that, you know, part of our challenge as a board is to, in a very clear, simple way, explain to the town as people go to vote, why we have this increase that we have. You know, it's a different thing to say, you know, in your own household, well, you know, why did you spend an extra $40,000 this year? Well, unfortunately, you know, the furnace blew up and the well went bad. And, okay, it's understandable. Those things happen. And I think that that's going to be our challenge. And if that if we can show folks in town why we are where we are without expecting people, you know, like the budget bulletin is good for those of us that are analyzing what happens, and it's good for the budget committee. But the average voter is not going to go through that document. So I think our real challenge, and maybe, you know, this is something that we do through the finance committee, or we we ask for some other folks to help us out with, is, you know, use the word market. How do we market this so that people can really understand and appreciate what we've got? You can get balled up in this 8% number. You know, and I, and I heard last night the words unsustainable. Well, nobody's saying we're going to have an 8% increase every year for the next, you know, that that's not what we're saying, and that's not what the facts bear out. So I think that's the challenge. And I I I understand their concerns, but I do think we're sort of, if we continue to focus on that number, we're not going to solve the problem. The problem is how do we share the information so people can appreciate the situation we're in? And that, you know, those year-over-year numbers are still pretty good.
And I think you're right. We have to show data, you know, of past years. I mean, we had a 25% on the tax assessment in town, which, you know, as we learn as a board, now everyone in town is going to be happy with what's what's happened with that. Some people are. Some people had their house assessed higher, but their taxes went down. You know, the formula for it was, was, I'm sorry, got a flip-flop. Their house went up and their and their taxes stayed the same. Yeah, everyone was hit differently. So someone may be like, you know, my taxes went down 1,500 and I stayed the same. Well, another person's property went up, went up, and they had to pay more. It's a, it's a very complicated thing that, you know, I think some people don't understand. Trying to explain in public, be a little confused sometimes. But my point is that, you know, we need to show year-over-year increases and how it's affected by what's what happened in 2019. 25% is a lot. And and if you remember, that was the year a lot of people were upset about the increase because it affected them. But you have to look at, you know, Rob, one thing I look at is last year, we were at 2043, three cents difference from previous year, and now we're going to 165. People have to understand the change and what's happened with revenue. They have to understand the assessment involved in there. And I agree with you, delivering that to the community clearer is a great point. How to do it? I would love to, love to find a way to do it and make it very clear and bring it Wednesday to them and say, this is how it can be, they can be, you know, the voters basically saying, hey, this is what's happened. I think it's a great, great way. Wouldn't you agree?
I mean, so I would just say, you know, the budget committee is probably reflecting the same conversation that we all had, at least I can speak for myself. You know, we worked on this for a month and the 8% through all the courses of our conversation was what stuck out to us. So it's, it's not out of the question that, obviously, that would be what the budget committee is also looking at. And again, I can only speak for myself, but, you know, I came around once, you know, we really dissected what are the drivers? And then going back to like, how would we resolve that through budget reductions, right? Because that's what we're talking about, the, how would we do that through the operating budget reductions? And, you know, we went back and looked at at what we considered last year as, what would those budget reductions? And I, for one, just after just talking for the last hour and a half about, you know, what we're, what we're going to see in terms of educational needs coming out of the pandemic to go and to make those reductions on that list would it, the, it's hard to, you can't balance those two together because we we have a need. So that's what got me there, you know, and it wasn't easy. You know, an 8% budget increases a lot and for all the reasons we already know. But I I do think, I mean, I think the presentation that we've done that, you know, that Rob has produced, that one pager, I think is very good. And in my mind, it's a question, there's the budget committee, which is, they're going to make their own decision on what what needs to happen. I think they're informed, they understand. But they'll, I mean, I, we should explain it to them, but I don't have a, I don't, I don't operate thinking that they don't understand. I think they have a really good understanding of what's going on. So I think they're just going to have to make a decision on what, you know, what they want to put forward. I hope, I hope they see the wisdom of what we've done. And then I just think it really is, how do we take the conversation and bring it out to the community? And I think we have the tools. It's really just, do we have the forums in order to to be able to have a, have a communication with people in town? That's, that's two-way and not a one-way. And I I struggle with that, especially now because of where we're at. But I do think if we start planning for some informational sessions over and above what we need to do under whatever House Bill 1172 or whatever that process is, I I think it would behoove us to think through some like public conversations that we want to have between the time the budget committee votes on the budget in early February and before those required ones that we need to have. Having something in the middle there through February and early March would probably be, it would probably, it would probably be good, especially if we can make them interactive so that as many people as possible could could see that information, ask us questions and understand, you know, what we're presenting. That's all I can come up with. It's not very good, but.
The only other open question, and I hope I wrote about it in board notes, but we had a legislative update recently at the school administrators. And there is some bipartisan support, understanding the gap that everybody's in because of the one-time right payment last year and the loss of enrollment and the adequacy. But that, you know, so there may be some relief from the state as Norm was talking about. This is a big revenue piece. I mean, they're just, there is some bipartisan support for that. You know, we've talked about the finance.
And I guess, and I guess, you know, I'm going to agree with you, Jim. If I'm reading you correctly, and sometimes it's a little tricky on Zoom, is we've done our job and we delivered a budget to them in a new format. And every question that they've asked, we've answered. I dig deep, I dug deep last night, saying, what else would you like from the board? And the only thing that they wanted to discuss, which we're going to be talking, is the next line item on this, on the update here. They've have all the information. We've answered all their questions, and I don't know what else I can do. And maybe it's not a, it's not a matter, maybe I'm overthinking it because, you know, I want what's best for this board. You know, I give it my all. You all know that. You know, I represent all of us here. I guess it just, I stand back, you know, stand back and wait for them to ask more questions. But yeah, I guess I agree with Jim. You know, we deliver maybe a better communication process once we get to get to the community to deliver this and we deliver what we could to the budget committee and go from there.
Steve, was there any sense in the legislature when?
It, the, the Senate, the Senate bill holding harmless on the adequacy aid is expedited. So it, it, according, according to Jay Khan and that the Senator comment is going quickly through the process to get relief before the, before what's happening very soon, which is the deliberative sessions and, you know, for SB two towns as well as annual meetings. So they did expedite it, Rob, and hopefully we'll get early returns. And I can check in in the next couple of days with Representative Luna to see what the status is.
Thanks.
I was just going to jump, jump in on this. You know, I think, I I understand that for this budgeting, we wanted to really focus on what the operating budget is. But I actually think that there is a real benefit in in being upfront and saying, we're bringing you an 8% budget and it sucks. And it is, or an 8% tax increase and it sucks and it is unsustainable and we hate it. And here's why we are bringing it to you. I I sometimes feel that acknowledging that this is crappy is helpful because we're not, none of us in a regular year would say, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to bring an 8% tax impact. That sounds like a great idea. You know, I I think that we have a mix set of circumstances that we've gone over several times, but I do think that there is benefit in naming it. I also, while I understand and I've talked about as well, the impact of our state funding on the local level, you know, and I've said it before, we are 50 out of 50 in the United States. I often do not feel that that feels like an effective argument. You know, I think that it feels like passing the buck. It can both be a reality and also not a good argument. You know, it is a reality that we are all working in. But I I don't think that it has as much of an impact as perhaps we would hope it would. And I think that naming what we are doing and what we are bringing and acknowledging that this is not awesome and then deep dive unpacking it is helpful. I think that those, you know, showing the programmatic budget is helpful. I think to Rob's point, the year-over-year numbers, what the facts bear out, that's helpful. Because these are, these are things that we have some control over, even if it's very small, and that we within our community can express to one another. I just think that when we start talking state level, you know, I will continue talking to our legislators. But as a way to communicate why we're in the position that we're in, I find that it's a less persuasive argument. So those are just a couple of other thoughts that I have as far as messaging and talking about the budget situation that we're in.
And I agree with Andrea on that, on the last point. I I think it's a point of, it's a, it's a fact and a point of reference on the state money. But I think, you know, you, and I don't use the word excuse to mean that, you know, that's what we're doing. But I I think sometimes people hear it that way. And so I think acknowledging what it is, and I think it's a fact, and we could talk about why that fact is. But I think we had to, we could state it, but we then have to go over and explain because it's, you know, it's not going to, it it may not resolve itself. And so that can't be what we rest on, but we haven't been. But but I think it is a fact and we have to move on.
How definitive are we able to be that next year and the year after won't look like this? I mean, are we able to really identify this as a confluence of factors in a moment in time that we really don't think will continue? And can we be specific about that to give people some confidence that this isn't the trajectory that they were, you know, the unsustainable argument? Do we have a way to say, yeah, this isn't sustainable and this isn't what it's going to be? I mean, are we in a position to do that? I don't know the facts well enough to know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, Steve, could Well, I mean, Steve, you can, you can, I mean, if you just think about the drivers, you know, the retirement costs as a driver isn't, isn't something we're going to be seeing year to year.
And that's not going to, right, that's, that's a two-year ex-oral stabilize. So that's solid. This was the biggest increase because it was the biggest amount of the, of the facility project. We talked about that during the presentation, right? This is the end of one, the beginning of another, as opposed to just the end of round two. And I hate to say it, you know, I guess, I, I don't think the hole will be as large, right? If the, if the revenue was down what it is, I don't think, well, I said that once and Mr. O'Brien said, no, Steve, it's going to be lower. So I won't say that, but I think the revenue please will be more stabilized, especially if enrollment goes up, which we expect. You know, health insurance this year was 6.25. That's, I think it's pretty close to, I mean, it's, it's not a bad year. So we'll see how that does. Some, you know, our drivers are typically health insurance, retirement. You know, you know, those are typically, but the project will start to stabilize.
So I think I got some advice from you, which I'll unpack with Michelle and Steve and maybe, maybe with Rob. I mean, I think, you know, we, we've done our job, you know, and I think Andrea's right. And this is reality. This is the budget. This is why it's this way.
And, and maybe, you know, part of what, what you and Rob and Steve on the finance committee can think about just is the, is the communication out to the community? And, and what, what sort of a, what you think a plan looks like that makes sense? And I'm not, my suggestion isn't that you and Rob and Steve have to do all the work, but, but you know, think about what the plan looks like. And then, you know, we, we can figure out how we best accomplish, you know, some, some outreach and communication and engagement with, with different groups and audiences. Just because that's probably our, our best next step in terms of getting more input and getting more people understanding of, of sort of where we're at in the numbers. So I don't know if that's a task that you guys are willing to take on, but that might, that might be a good next step.
Would love to. We might have some community members who may want to help, have some suggestions on communication plan. I'm happy to listen to that and, and bring it to you, Rob and Steve and Michelle. Maybe there's something we can do to get the word out.
Perfect. So Norm, you may mention to it, the next item is the, the town valuation in the budget process.
Sure. So last night, when we were closing the meeting, there was a discussion in the meeting before about this and how the select board has one value and how the school board has another. So in close on last night, the select, they were discussing, maybe the board using the select board's value and determining the overall tax rate impact. And I wasn't comfortable speaking to it or agreeing to anything until I spoke to Steve and Michelle because I don't have enough knowledge of why we use that, that rate and that specific number. So it was important for me to come back here before I vote on anything. And so with that, they agreed that we would have a discussion as a board and then come back to the budget committee next week and have a discussion. It makes sense for the board and the select board to have the same validation. I agree. But what number we use, I think, is a discussion that needs to be discussed here and why we use this and go from there. The select board has done a one percent increase overall on the valuation that we, we use. So it's like a $600,000 increase, $6 million increase about, if I'm doing my math in my head correctly. So just to let you guys know, that's, they were using that as a number in their budget. I did ask them whether or not the town administrator agreed to that, and they didn't give me any indication yet, which we're going to find out. Because, you know, as a board member, I've, I've said it last night, I always trust Michelle and Stephen. Before I, you know, say no to them, I want to make sure that I'm able to say, hey, this is why I believe I'm saying no to them. So with that, you know, it's a discussion for us here to determine the best path forward and recommendation.
So for us, the, the tax, the, the tax rate was set in November. That's a valuation submitted by DRA on the form. And for schools already, we have two different valuations, one for the statewide education property tax, which I think doesn't include utilities and something like that. So I have the form, if you want to just show the screen real quick. Can you see that? So the valuation, the 780, that's what we've used, right? And Michelle, that's what we always use, that number. It's not arbitrary. It's not capricious. It's there. And if it goes up, then, then the, this tax rate setting, the time goes down, you know, and, and then this is the 749, that's the state education, that's the alternate one. So to be completely frank, when we found out at the budget committee that the town was considering using a, a different evaluation, which is an assumption that the value is going up. And certainly Neil and his team has a lot more knowledge of permits, right? And the number of new homes and, and the increase to the base, that's something Michelle and I don't get. But the, it just is making that assumption that it's going up and to bake that in as, as a given, as opposed to something that happens, you know, a, a natural progression. You know, Michelle will kick me virtually, but Michelle and I have talked a lot about this. We like to say we use the DRA 2020 tax rate breakdown valuation. It's defensible. It's, it's published. It's consistent tracking. All of a sudden this year, we're going to use two percent. Next year we'll use one. What about the tracking? How do we follow it? And I deep respect, as you all know, for Neil Cass and with the slight, deep respect for that, but for us, we already have two evaluations. I would really hate to start explaining about why we adjusted it this year and not the past and lose historical record and a practice. But we serve with the pleasure of the board. We'll advocate for whatever, you know, you think is right. But from our standpoint, using this documented, printed, published, this, you know, practice is what's best for estimating a tax rate based on a written document. Is that fair, Michelle?
Absolutely. And so I think it only, it brings clarity to how, yeah, how you got at it. And, and honestly, all it does is it changes it to make it less. And some people might think that's funny. That's being funny about it because of the fact that, you know, you really don't know and we don't. And so I would hate, and, and we've never had to do this, but in, in the time I'm here, and I think it was even before, but we've never estimated what the tax rate was going to be. And then we're, we're off in that it was going to be more. But if we do some estimating and somehow something happens because construction's not, you know, we all know this, we've heard it. Because of COVID, you can't get things you used to be able to get on a timely manner and everything. Someone could have a fire before the date that, you know, the evaluations are done on. And I mean, there's too many things that can happen. To me, it, it would be just giving a delivery of what's the worst case. And then hopefully it can be delivered better than that because of exactly that kind of a thing.
That's where we are.
You know, and this is, when I was on a different board, this, this topic had come up often. And at least the past experience has been, I, I think this, Steve and Michelle just stated was the response and how the board progressed. And so I, I, I tend to think that, well, I think that the town and the school should use the same number for valuation. And we've put forward a budget that uses what has historically in this defensible number based upon DRA. And so like as one member, I'm very comfortable with that. I think the budget committee, the budget committee's job is to, is to vote on a budget that will then go on a warrant. And I think if the budget committee feels that the valuation number should change to reflect a different number, the budget committee can make that determination and put a budget number forward. And then the, this board can decide if, if that number is acceptable to us, or if we want to put forward an alternate to that and the warrant. And so I, I appreciate the budget committee wanting input into it, but we presented them with a budget that uses evaluation and, you know, the budget committee needs to make their own determination, in my view. They need to make their own determination of how they settle evaluation that the town has put forward and the school district has put forward. We can defend ours. We just did. Steve and Michelle just gave the defense of where the number comes from and how you trace it back and what it means. The budget committee, I think, needs to have a determination if they can do the same case for what the town put forward. I don't feel that that's our responsibility to have to, to have to defend a different evaluation that, that the town's putting forward. It's, it's not our decision, in my view, to make. It's, the budget committee wants to do it, then it's in their right to go forward. But anyway, that's where I land. I, I think a change of the valuation, the way they're presenting it, makes our budget look a little better. But again, I'm not sure that, right now, I don't think it's ours to defend because right now we can defend what we put forward because it's, it's historically. And we could trace it to DRA. So anyway, that was a long syllable, sorry.
No, I agree with you, Jim. You know, when the voter votes and they're seeing what they're voting for a tax impact, I want to be able to have something, a document saying, hey, this is what we're going by. I don't want to, I mean, and that was for me when I asked them last night, the risk factor. And they had said, you know, it could fluctuate this or that. But again, you know, I didn't have enough, enough knowledge until I saw this document where, to me, you know, as a controller, I look at a paper trail. And I go back and I look at that and I'm like, okay, this is why I made a decision in my, in my presentation to a board. I have a number that's not going to change that I can fall back on. So with that, I would, I would agree with Jim. I would leave it alone. If the budget committee wants to produce a new number and bring it to us to discuss, happy to look at it. But I, I, I support, I support what they had to say.
I was just going to ask a quick question is, did the town put forward the algorithm or the metrics as to how they came up with that number? Like specific, or did they just say, you know, based on building permits, we project? I mean, was there any math that was done here and?
Yeah. So they, they used, and that was a good question that Mr. Zankel brought up last night, that they had, I believe it was a, it was a total, I think, 15 building permits. And it ended up being like a total of 525,000, which the average house that they were talking about was 300,000. So there's a big gap in the math that they were, that they were talking about in the meeting because there's no way 15 houses at 525 is really, I mean, it's nice, but I mean, I don't, I don't see that being an accurate number. I don't want to guess. You know, I want to, want to, I want to be.
I don't want to guess either. I'm just curious about.
You know, that's, that's what I was told. And that's why I wanted to ask Neil, you know, I, I, he's a town minister. He knows more data collected than, than I do. But again, I work with Michelle and Steve on this part, so.
So Steve, simply put, school districts across the state, use your model to come up with their valuation to set the tax rate.
Yep. Never heard of anybody messing with a valuation that's changed anticipating, never heard of it.
It's like a no-brainer to me.
Thank you. I think that's, that's the goal of this item. We've got a, a good discussion. Norm has his marching orders and I appreciate it. So thank you for this time.
Andrea or Seth, before we leave it, do you guys have any, any thoughts, anything different? I guess. No. Okay.
Can you just make sure that we bring that document to the next Wednesday so we can just show that paper trail? Michelle, budget committee? Okay, that'd be great.
I'll send it to you if you'd like.
Lots of, yeah, thank you.
All right. I lost my agenda. There we go. That was easy. Thanks, Steve. Building committee update. Norm, I think.
Yeah, real, real quick, I, I want to give a, a quick shout out to Bill. He gave me a tour of Harold Martin, and I must say, it's beautiful. You know, it, it's, you walk in there, you're not looking at a blueprint anymore, you're in it. And I gotta say, everyone is doing great. I'm very pleased with what's going on. And thank you first time for doing that. Real quick update on the building committee. In our last meeting, we discussed adults. Steve and his team are working on a recommendation that, that we bring them forward to move forward in the next month or so, where I'll bring to the board to let you know what their recommendations are for us to discuss. But that's the next big, big part of the project is to kind of look at that while we move, move through construction and other adults. So it's his team decide what's best for their schools, telling us how they can use these additional funds to affect and help our students.
And yeah, it'll be coming from board action, I hope, in early February.
Perfect. Any questions for Norm or Steve? All right. So next up, Steve, you, you talked about this earlier in the meeting, but the custodian and night supervisor.
Yeah, this is an open position. We're pleased to bring this scenario forward. And so it's an action item tonight.
Any questions for Steve or this is an action item? Is everybody all set with it? Perfect. All right. And next up are financials for quarterly and monthly. So Michelle.
Sure. So in the packet was two big, well, one big document and one smaller document. But one thing I just want to point out a little bit because, you know, you might look at the, you know, the balance of our fund balance at the end of the year, what I'm predicting as of December 31st. When this, when this was done, this report, I had already reclassed the items from the grants that we did get into the grants. So part of why we have what we have for a fund balance is because the money that the board gratefully set aside for certain purchases, technology related and PPE, we haven't had to use yet for the most part, some, but not for, you know, in the scheme of things. So that is part of why the balance is so high. I just bring it up because we, we do have a fluky year and, you know, being that we're in COVID and we carried forward money. And so it's an abnormal year. So I just throw caution in the wind for people that are just looking at this, thinking that it should all go, you know, to reduce the taxes. Because as, as we've talked about before in the budget process, every time you can't meet it the following year, then it's automatically a tax rate increase. And so I just thought that was important too, to point out because, you know, people will look at this document in comparison to the budget. It's just something to be mindful of. And the hope would be that if we are going in the way we are, that, you know, maybe the board could, you know, if we get the five percent sock as much as we can to that, and by then we'll know about what we're getting from the state. And then, you know, we'll be able to figure that out, you know, do we need to encumber money because of services on top of what we're going to get from the state? So I, I guess those are just new things that I'm starting to think about, to, to make sure that people start thinking about. And just because it is a lot of information. And what we want to do is, is do the best thing, which is deliver a tax rate as low as we can without being too aggressive on things to potentially cause issues in the future.
I had just one question. And look at the unreserved fund balance. When we offered early retirement to our, to our, to the two additional teachers, did that, or does that encumber it already and put somewhere else? Or that's still in there until it's taken?
No, because early inclination is, is that we will not have five that will take it. Early inclinations are there will be, hope, you know, I don't want to say hopefully, but like, you know, we, we factored in three. And so when we did the budget for next year, we factored in that three people would. And so that is what is encumbered right now is the three. We would have done it if we had information that led us to more realistic that it was going to happen to be four or five. We definitely would have that money encumbered.
Okay. So we, the other two offerings are in that balance then, since?
So we, we don't budget for it. So we never took it out. So like, for instance, three people have been in ever since they, ever since the retirements have been put in, we had to pick three and we picked the three most realistic ones. Not knowing at the time if the board would entertain five. And so if I knew that all five were definitely, you know, 90 plus going to take it, I would have already had those other two encumbered, but I don't. But we didn't have the money anyways. We have a little bit of money left in those areas because we didn't spend as much as we had budgeted. But I hope that was helpful.
No, it makes sense. That's what I want to know. Thank you so much.
And I think the definitive date is March 1st. And I, I think I did update the board and board notes about one decision that has been made. Did I put that in board notes? I think, I write a lot, so thank you, Andrea.
Any other questions or? Any other questions uh or or thoughts for Michelle? Michelle, thank you for that. That was a good explanation, too. Um, all right, so uh that is the end of our um, I guess of our agenda items. And so that brings us to the. Uh, second public comment portion of the meeting. And so uh for those. Um, of you who have stuck with us this long um. And uh have public comments that you'd like to make, I just ask uh to click the raise your hand button towards the bottom of your screen. Um, and then we will call you in order. If you could just um give your name and address. And try to keep your comments to about three minutes, that would be uh fantastic. Appreciate it. So first up is Candy Garvin.
Hello, my friends.
Hello, Candy.
We're all breathing a little easier, I think. Since a couple of days ago. And I want to thank you. I watched the budget meeting last night, too, right, Norm? And yeah. It was a really good meeting. You have done an excellent job. With this budget. You did what you said you were going to do. It's detailed enough that even. A non-numbers person like me can it can understand most of it. And I appreciate that. The thing that I'm going to do next is be the devil's advocate. Of course, people are going to look at eight percent. Hi! That's normal, isn't it? You don't want to just bring the sheep to the pen. You have educated and you know what? I know you'll educate the people who need to be educated. When we do the Zoom meetings before the the vote. I know that. You are really good at it. Um, my suggestion is. That you. You just take a couple of breaths and realize that your hard work is work that has been done. You know your mission. And the people in town who have to pay the taxes, you're gonna hear it over and over. I might as well be the first one. Whether I believe that or not, they're going to, we're going to say, we can't do this. Part of it could be the the pandemic, the end of the pandemic. Uh. Parents want their kids back in school a hundred percent when it's not quite safe yet, people. It's not quite safe. Just again, take a couple of breaths about it. Uh, the kids will catch up. They're much smarter than we are in a lot of ways. Um, and as you heard Amy say, a lot of their skill set. Has grown in ways that they would not have imagined it. Um, they want to be with their friends, you know, through growth and development. That's really what they want. That's what they really, really want. And it will be so very soon. I just. Don't want you to get so discouraged. If. You know what I'm gonna say, right? If it does not pass, you've done a great job. I I. I believed in you, not that that matters. But it. It is. A good thing. The teachers needed a raise. They needed a raise. You'll hear about um the insurance costs. And people will say, well, why did you only get the new hires? You know, and you know the reasons why you did that and you can explain that. It's it's. It's not geometry or physics or calculus. It's just you've been right above board with us. Don't be discouraged. All right? Pinky swear? Okay. You take care. Steve, I've never seen you look so relaxed.
There's there's something in the timing, Candy.
Yes, I know, I know, I know. Um. Good luck. We'll we'll be okay. And you only live in Bo. It's not like we won't see you ever again. Talk to you later. Thank you for taking my call. I'm going to watch Mr. Mayor now.
Thank you, Candy. Have a good night. Uh, so next hand up is um Emily Gula.
Hi, I'm Emily Gula, one sixty-nine Spring Street. I just want to thank everybody on the board and teachers and leadership team. We appreciate all you're doing. I know you're working extremely hard. Uh, and I was glad to hear the comments from Mr. Corozan. My two students are at Harold Martin. About the uh planning to really make the most of the instructional time that's available. And I just encourage you to think about how maybe you can restructure parts of the schedule to prioritize that literacy instruction because I think a benefit of remote learning. Has been four days of what uh known as foundations or that beginning reading, letter names and sound instruction they can get. Um, my students are getting that every day, so twenty to thirty minutes a day. When we return to hybrid, that means two days of that instead of four. So. Thinking about how creatively on those days of hybrid that you can potentially double up on that. Early reading instruction just to keep kids moving at the pace that they have been able to do while in remote. Thanks.
Wonderful. Emily, thank you for your comments. And we'll pass that along to, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Cruz is listening, but we'll pass it on. Um, next hand is Sarah Mattson Dustin.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. This is Sarah Mattson Dustin. I'm at five seventeen Dustin Road. I am in the camp of being really worried about my kindergartner and about literacy in particular. So I really appreciated. The discussion tonight uh about increased flexibility in the decision-making matrix. Um, also appreciate the comments that Emily Gula just made about really trying to come up with creative ways to get kids a little bit more literacy instruction. Uh, so the matrix is one of the foundational documents that we have. The other is the health and safety MOA. And I really encourage you to think of. The MOA is also being a document that can respond to conditions as they change. Uh, like the matrix does and not one that we have to wait to change until we have every piece of information that we might like to have. We don't know how phase one B of the vaccine rollout is going to go. It starts next week. We don't know exactly when. Uh, the vaccine supply is going to become more robust. Uh, but. We don't want to wait until we have every bit of that information. To determine how we're going to change in response to it. Because if we do that, we're going to lose really precious time. And I think we teach kids about sense of urgency and I really feel like we need a sense of urgency around this. We lost a couple of weeks in the fall. Uh, because we had to wait for a budget to pass. The idea that we might lose even two, three, four weeks. Because we haven't gotten ahead of renegotiating the MOA, I I think is really um an unacceptable outcome. I am. Thrilled that teachers have the extraordinary privilege of being able to have access to an extremely scarce and valuable resource. It cannot be. That that privilege does not mean that kids who have made really significant sacrifices for going on a year now, that something doesn't change for them to. They are in an early phase so that we can get kids back to school. And I totally agree with you. We don't know if that's going to be March fifteenth, April first, May fifteenth. Um, but I think it's time to start having the conversation about what does a critical mass of vaccinated teachers get us? Is it three feet of distance so that kids can come back every day and we keep the masks on? Great. Um, is it something else? I I I don't even know what the other ideas might be, but I I am all for continuing. To follow public health guidance. Um, but I just, I see this um, this vaccination. Of our district staff as being a just transformative event, but I really hope we can be prepared to to. The second we hit the condition that makes it safe for more kids to be in school, we don't want to be talking about it. We want to be doing it. So I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah, for your comments. Um, I don't believe we have any any more hands up. Um, I take that back. We do. Uh, Mr. Chris Taylor. Hey, Chris, thanks for joining.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Good, thank you. Chris Taylor here, uh, in New Town, Clement Hill. Uh, while the uh appreciate the discussion tonight, all the information in regards to the different models. Uh, my student would be over at Harold Martin, uh, being a second grader. Uh, one of the pieces of information, I guess, would be good to clarify uh in regards to the models, uh, if they do go back to our hybrid model. Um, is there still the option for full remote uh in the event, you know, for families with um. Health concerns through the family, you know, until we get further down, who knows what the vaccination status is gonna be. Um, but will we, are we gonna have that option for full remote in that in that event?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. It's a good question. Um, I think the short answer is yes, that there's there will remain a um, a full remote, full remote model. Um, for those families who choose to do so as we've been doing, um, you know, since uh. Uh, September, so that 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 option will still be available.
Okay, excellent. It's a great option and, you know, hopefully we can all get back safely and uh. Having the kids back to some sort of uh interaction with their peers again.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take it a moment.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Um, so uh the only hand we have up right now is Emily Gula and and I don't know, Emily, if that's because you haven't um. Put your hand down or if you have another comment. So I'll give you, oh, you took your hand down. So um, I know the answer. Thank you. Um, so next hand that did come up is uh Jen.
Hi, I just wanted to state that I agree with um Sarah Metz and Dustin. This is Jen Blackriff, seven sixteen, Hoppington Road again. Um, I I do think that we need to start looking at that MOA sooner rather than later. Um, and I thought Norm had a good point that in one B, there are some teachers that will be qualifying to. Um, get vaccinated sooner rather than later, um, and will be able to get vaccinated in phase one B. Um, so I do think it's worth looking at that soon. Um, for all the reasons Sarah stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other hands up. And so um, at this point, I will close the public uh comment. Um, agenda item and and um. I don't think this needs to be said, but I'll just say it. Um, you know, all of our emails um are available on the website, um, on the on the district website. And so um. People normally aren't shy, but I would just invite people who who have comments they they um want to make to feel free to email the board. Um, your comments and and we do read them all, so um appreciate that. And so um, I would ask under, we're going under action items. I would ask if there's a motion for the Huffington School Board to adopt a revised FY twenty-two total operating budget value of twenty-one million. Seven hundred thirty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars.
Moved. Robbie, I'm mute.
Second.
There we go. Is there any discussion?
Guys, second too. No, sorry.
No discussion. All right, I'm not hearing any. Uh, Rob.
Uh, Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
I think yes.
And Jim O'Brien is yes. Uh, so that passes five zero. Um, so is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the March twentieth warrant article number five to read as follows? Article five, to see if the school district will vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded. To retain year-end unassigned general funds in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year. Five percent of the current fiscal year's net assessment in accordance with RSA one ninety-eight colon four B Roman two. A majority vote is required.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And this is consistent with the wording from DRA, correct? All right. Um, Rob?
Uh, Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
I think yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So that motion passed five zero. Um, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to accept the superintendent's nomination of James Terrio Custodian Night Supervisor? Pending final approval of the superintendent start date to be determined by the superintendent.
So moved and welcome.
Second.
There we go. Any discussion? Um, Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
I think yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so that passes five zero. Um, so we do have a need for non-public, but before I ask for a motion on that, is there anything, um, any other items any board member wants to bring up before we go into non-public? All right. And so I would ask for a motion. To for the board to go into non-public session um for the discussion of matters as per RSA ninety-one A colon three Roman two. And we would have um sessions on A for personnel and C for reputation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, um, so Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Rob, uh, sorry, Norm.
Rob already went. Norm Gupel, yes.
And Seth?
I think yes.
Um, and Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so the board will be going into non-public to discuss uh those matters. Um, I will, for the board, I will send you in just a second um a link for the non-public. And so um, when we adjourn here, we can just go on. Um, follow that link. Yes, Steve, I'd like you to join us. Um, all right, with that, um, thank you all and thanks for everybody who attended tonight. And this is a good discussion. I really appreciate it. And we'll see everybody in two weeks. Thanks, Juliet and Mia. Have a good night.